This is a hybrid meeting, which means that we're in person as well as on Zoom. I'll have the members of the board announce their names.
Hello.
Dr. Z.
President.
And Ken Pacheco is also present. So it's also going to be on cable. It should be live now and it'll be repeated on cable and it will at some point be uploaded to YouTube.
Yes.
Could we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? So please remain standing. Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since please remain standing.
Remain standing.
Since our last meeting, the following Dyton family members have passed. Michael Bonafont of North Dyton, sixty. He was retired thirty-year veteran of the Taunton Police Department. Wayne Eugenio of Dyton, sixty-seven. Our retired worker at Pride Incorporated. And Angelina Pacheco, one hundred and four years of age and mother of Selectman Ken Pacheco. We ask for a moment of silence and condolences to their family. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to thank the Dyton community for the support and comfort they gave my family through the past week. My mom was a hundred and four. She had eight children. First child they had was born blind. Blind his whole life, his life. He's eighty-one now. My parents lost my sister Claire when she was seven. So they've had some difficult times. But like I said, she was a hundred and four. We knew this day was going to happen, but you're never ready for it and she was my mom. So she was a great mom. Thank you to the Dyton community for the support.
Schedule appointments. You have representative from BP?
Yes.
Identify yourself and please go to the podium.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. My name is Chad Curtin and I'm the Owners Project Manager for the Bristol Plymouth Regional Technical School project. And with me I have.
I'm Bobby Williams from H M H Architects and the project manager for the Bristol Plymouth project. I also just completed the Bristol Aggie Arts Under Construction school, but that is also our project.
Would you like me to plug in or we can just kind of run through verbally? Is there a preference? We do have a quick PowerPoint presentation.
Oh, yeah, like I can plug it in if you want.
Sure.
Give you a feedback or.
There's an HDMI on it? Does that work?
We only have one cable. Okay. Sorry. Oh, yeah, we should be able, we should be able to mirror the screen.
Okay. Working magic.
I don't have any magic, but. Bluetooth. Where would the. In there.
Here you go. You try to see. Wireless. No, it didn't. You keep two things going. Yeah, I'm trying to think. The presentation is on the school's website. If you've been brought up from that, you'll be able to.
Yeah, I'll do that. I tried to find it. Yeah, that's probably the easiest way.
Can I make a suggestion? Just talented Zoom. Be talented Zoom. We can share some.
I'm not on network here. See if I can find it. Yeah, they're all locked.
It's BP Tech.org.
It's at the bottom, right?
Hey, can you type this in for me?
One of the dropdowns at top will have a building project.
Oh, you already have it up?
About two.
Yeah.
Do good.
It's in about, okay.
We'll go with him then.
Oh, right here, okay. Thank you.
The words locked in, locked in there?
Yeah, I did the wrong one.
Meeting is in meeting documents. I don't know where Glenn put that one.
It's right there. Do you have to?
He's got, he's got control.
I do it, I'm just not.
Yeah, I get it.
Yep.
If you keep Strongo all the way down.
Yep.
There's a PowerPoint.
All the way down.
All the way down. I think it's the last PowerPoint you see.
Right. Eight twenty-three?
Yeah, it should be it.
Thank you very much.
No, that's a, that's a different one.
Oh, that's a different one?
Yes.
Have you guys logged on Zoom yet?
No, I'm not on Wi-Fi.
Um, is it? Nope, it's not either.
Do you want to put this password in there?
I looked in advance and I wasn't able to find anything that.
Well, that's the Wi-Fi. Is that the password camera? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, camera three hundred.
So it wasn't the eight twenty-three?
No, that was a, um. That was a school building committee update.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not sure because we. Probably what we made it so.
I can think of it. If I could find it on my phone, I can.
Send it.
Send it. Would you ever have your phone? I can have it online, but I have it there so I can send you some. All right, hold on to Zoom here.
Okay.
Thank you. Chad. Um, I can click right down here. All right. Oh, I didn't click that in. Yeah. Yeah, but I clicked that in. There's one of those notes.
Yeah. Um, you, I'll give you. But I'm. I'll appear as I was.
I think we sent the school in our presentation. Yep. I don't have a USP, sorry.
All right.
We can just talk to Ray, I guess.
Yeah, why don't, uh.
Yeah.
Sure. So we're going to be out of here by ten, so.
Yeah. I can, I can get it up on that screen now. They don't have an email tied to that screen. All right, so we'll, we'll, we'll just talk through it. We'll do our best to kind of explain the process and where we are and feel free to interject if you have any questions. So again, my name is Chad Curtin and I'm with PMA Consultants, the Owners Project Manager, representing the district. District, of course, includes Dyton and Bobby Williams is the architect on the project. The MSBA process is, is very, very scripted. So it all starts with the development of an educational program. Once the district has been accepted into the program, which is a very long line to get into in the first place. They have three steps that you need to get through before you get to the phase of the project we're at right now. It's all part of the feasibility study. So the first step is, once you're in the program, you have to look at all the options. You have to grab a couple dozen options, repairs, renovations, new construction, put everything on the table, submit it to the MSBA. The MSBA board reviews that submission. They say, okay, good, you vetted everything, move to the next step. The next step is called preferred schematic. So we look at those couple dozen options and we narrow down the one preferred, most beneficial solution. That again gets submitted to the MSBA board. It's reviewed by, the MSBA is Massachusetts School Building Authority. So them in conjunction with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education review that submission. And they say, yes, we agree. You're clear to move to the next phase of feasibility study, which is schematic design. Schematic design is when you take that preferred solution, you bring it to the next level of detail and you really start looking at, at the high level knots and bolts and you develop a project scope and budget. So we just completed that in September. We made that submission to the state. State reviewed it, they accepted it. We went in front of the MSBA's Board of Directors on October twenty-seventh and they authorized the execution of what we call a project funding agreement. So for the project, the next step is to obtain local funding authorization for the project. That's the final hurdle for the project before it moves into detailed design and then construction. So very high level on the, the MSBA project timeline. We're about two years into this right now. After this, there's a year of design and then the construction phase for this project is two years for the new build. And then we're looking at a third year, which would be abatement and demolition of the existing building.
Yeah, so just to give a little bit, to be in the feasibility study, the first thing we do is we look at the existing school. So as part of that, the school was built in nineteen seventy-two, was built for approximately six hundred and forty to seven hundred and fifty students. It's currently around thirteen hundred and four students. So we looked at all the HVAC, everything about the building and essentially you determined that these, the windows, the systems are beyond their useful life. Which means you're going to have to do a full-fledged renovation of the existing building just to bring it up to current codes, accessibility codes and all of the, all the necessities for students to partake in a, in a twenty-first century building. So we, we had a few photos of the school, but obviously you can't see those just to show some of the existing conditions in those worn systems. So again, what we identified was a full cup, a full code upgrade. There's some structural requirements that they don't, you know, they don't, they used to not design for lateral loads. So anytime you're going to do, go into a renovation of this magnitude, you're going to need to do a lot of upgrades. From there, we start to assess, looking at the MSBA's prescriptive guidelines. They essentially have a template that tells you exactly, you know, how big a science classroom should be, how big a classroom should be, what are the ranges and square footages? And we assess the existing building to see how mu, how many of the spaces actually meet the needs. And with Bristol Plymouth, none of the science classrooms meet the MSBA state requirement in size. Only a few of the classrooms were within ten percent of the guidelines. The cafeteria, the administration, the library, all of these were twenty percent below the MSBA state standards for space requirements. So not only did they have a building built for six hundred and fifty students, but they're also have about thirteen hundred students defined this school. We then take the next step because this is a vocational school. We now have chapter seventy-four DESE guidelines and we now assess the space constraints they're working with within their own programs. And again, just looking at the, the diagram here, they're collision technology, CAD CAM, automotive technology, electric, carpentry, engineering tech, design, visual communication, robotics, HVAC, cosmetology and computer networking. All of these programs were currently twenty percent below the DESE state guidelines. In fact, only four of the programs were within ten percent of those guidelines. So we do all this because we want to understand again what the next steps are going to be for this. We also look at the, the site and we identify with the site challenges. They have two main entries. When you first enter the building, you're entering at the back of the building where a lot of the service is. They have their culinary, which is a very robust program that is open to the public and it's right next to the service. So it's, it's not a very slightly entrance. As you make your way around to the, the front of the school, the entrance is buried, so it's really hard to see. It's also right off of Route twenty-four. I'm sure a lot of people drive Route twenty-four all the time and guarantee almost nobody has seen the school because it's buried behind a lot of the trees and it's, it's on the site. There's one billboard right there that says Bristol Plymouth, but the rest of the, the school is buried. From there, we took them through a visioning process similar that we did to, with the Bristol Aggie school. And this is to help identify facility goals and educational goals because we do want to bring the students into the twenty-first century into a, a building, but also understand the, the needs of the students. So we listed a, a series of goals. Create a school hub by central, centrally locating the library and the cafeteria. Create pride and branding for vocational programs. Create multipurpose auditorium for large academic gatherings. Encourage community engagement with public-facing programs and inviting site layouts and facilities. So we take these goals and we, as architects, we like to diagram. So we diagram the spaces that we, we know are going to be in the school and we start to look at ways that the, the public might engage with the school. Because again, a lot of these programs are public-facing, cosmetology, they have a daycare and they have the, the culinary, which I already mentioned. So we need a way for the public to come into the school, but to safely, you know, protect the students as well. So we do diagrams and space adjacencies that we follow through with when we start to lay out spaces. It is a very prescriptive. I was kind of mentioning the MSBA state guidelines. When you start a project like this, we don't just get to choose, oh, we want to build, you know, fifty-five science classrooms and ten, ten regular classrooms. We actually plug in a number of students in a MSBA and they spit out, they say, this is the maximum square footage you're allowed to build. This is the size of your classrooms, is the, how many classrooms you're going to get. And then you have what's called a net to gross factor, which allows for circulation spaces that you have to stay with them. So it's a very prescriptive process and we're constrained by these guidelines. We, we don't go above and beyond them. We also know that, again, this is a vocational school, so the, the one difficulty is the MSBA does not have a space template for vocational programs. So now we have to look to DESE chapter seventy-four guidelines and we meet with the teachers and we go through a robust process where we're trying to right-size these spaces. Because we don't, again, we're very conscious that every, every square foot is a dollar. So we're trying to make sure we're building the right size. So we go through a robust process to understand the spatial needs, all the equipment that are in these spaces. And then we, we get the right size for all of those programs as well. And of course, they meet the state standards at the end of that. So Chad alluded to this. As we're moving through the feasibility study, we're required to study multiple options of the MSBA. It's a very exhaustive process, so you get the right solution. The first that they make every project study is called a base repair option. This is just taking your existing school that I was talking about, all the code upgrades and everything. And you take that and you just bring it to all the, you, you just completely upgrade it. You don't take into account that there's thirteen hundred students cramming into a seven hundred and fifty student school. You just renovate the whole school. So that's the base repair, so that's always the option. It never meets the educational goals of the project, so there's risk that the MSBA wouldn't even approve it because it doesn't meet any of the goals that they're setting out to invest money in. But they make you, they make you at least start there. Then we look at renovation additions. So you always have to take the existing building, say, what can we save? You know, at Bristol Aggie, we saved a whole Gilbert Hall and renovated it. We did some new additions to it, but that was part of the, of that process. In this school, we looked at their existing school and we would have to build two wings additions. And because they're vocational programs, we would have to play this game of chess of renovate, build this, move this program into here, move this program in here, renovate. It was an eight-year renovation project. So it means two full classes would have had to live through renovation, not really had any of the experience going to Bristol Plymouth. It was very costly and that was, that was one of our options. The school also has a gym that's kind of separated from the school. So we said, well, maybe we can't keep the main school, but can we keep at least the gym and build around that? So we looked at that option, so that was one of the options we carried, we carried forward. In addition to that, we looked at new construction options. We said, well, they have a big football field here, they have a couple soccer fields here. You know, can we put a new school on these locations and not disrupt the students while we're, while we're building it? So we carried those forward. And the third thing, which, which puts even more options, is we were studying three different enrollment, enrollment populations. The existing, which is thirteen hundred, fifteen forty was the top. And then we chose, this district wanted to choose one in the middle, which was fourteen thirty-four. So not only did every renovation option have, you know, three different options to study for that, we also did three different enrollments. So the size of the building grew and contracted based on those enrollments. So I think all in all, we had probably about fifteen different options and Chad's going to get into that here in a minute. Did talk about the base repair, sorry, I kind of went through these slides already. Once we have all these options, we do an evaluation matrix. We go back to those facilities goals, those educational goals and we start to, to chart each of these different options. Which option meets the goals the most? And that's, that's one way we inform our decision-making. The next comes down to cost and that's what Chad will talk about next.
So every step of the way in the MSBA program, we're costing out these options. We're not only looking at the total project cost, but we're also looking at the potential state contribution, which is equally or potentially more important to each of the member communities. So that first submission that went to the state, we costed out thirteen different scenarios. Those estimates get submitted to the state. So these estimates are all performed by independent estimators. They specialize in school construction. This is their focus. There's two different estimators. They perform their estimates independently and then they reconcile at the end. So we know we're on the same page as far as numbers go. So that first submission went to the state. At that time, we had a range on the, what ended up being the preferred solution, the new construction on what is currently the football field. That range at that time was three hundred and twelve million dollars for their existing thirteen hundred enrollment. Up to three hundred and fifty million dollars for the high end on the fifteen forty enrollment. So district eventually during preferred schematic ended up going at the middle enrollment. During preferred schematic, mind you, this is the next submission to the state, so we've had more opportunity to, to take those estimates and we dive in and we look to maximize the state's contribution while also bringing down the overall total project cost. So at that preferred schematic solution that was submitted to the state, we were three hundred and seventeen million dollars. So it trimmed down quite a bit. So that gets submitted again to the state. We go in front of the Board of Directors. They look at every detail. Desi looks at every detail. They say, yes, we're on board. That's the most appropriate solution for this building and the most responsible solution. So at that time, we also looked at the potential MSBA grant amount and we're targeting an MSBA grant of a hundred and fifteen million dollars. The MSBA grant program, so the, the reimbursement rate for the project is sixty-two point two five percent. But the important piece is it's of eligible costs. So the state caps eligible costs on construction cost per square foot. One example, right now to build the school, they're, they're around six hundred dollars a square foot in the state of Massachusetts. The MSBA realizes this, they acknowledge it. They only reimburse the first three hundred and sixty dollars per square foot. And that's not because they think you can build a building for three hundred and sixty dollars per square foot, it's because they have a limited amount of money that they're trying to spread around to as many communities as they possibly can. They have a long list of districts waiting to get on that list. They're funded by one percent of the state sales tax, so they have a limited amount of money to, to go around to all these communities. So at that submission to the state, we were a hundred and fifteen million dollar grant. We were looking at a district share of two hundred and two million dollars. Then we move into the schematic design phase and I think we've probably already talked, we have some graphics and everything. We'll, we'll put them up on the website so you can access those at your own convenience. Detailed floor plans we'll put up there, massing studies, exterior materials. We're really shooting, so schematic design, we don't have every detail on this building drawn, but we have to baseline our materials. So the baseline is very middle of the road. It's a brick and mortar building, traditional look, should last all of the required MSBA fifty years and, and then some, of course. We briefly touched on main entrance and, and what that might look like. They want to create an approach from the Route twenty-four side and give it some presence on, along Route twenty-four. Sorry, Bobby, I just skimmed through parts, but it's tough without the visuals.
Yep. And the last thing is, the state does, for LEED certified buildings, they do provide an extra two percent reimbursement. So we always strive to make sustainable schools. So this school would be a LEED certified product.
So part of the maximizing the, the state contribution for the project, of course. All right, so we, we go to that next level of detail, it's schematic design. And at this point, we need to lock in what's called a project scope and budget agreement with the MSBA. That's what just happened in October. On October twenty-seventh, we get that authorization from the board. So that locks in the expected MSBA grant amount. So total project budget at the end of schematic design was three hundred and five million dollars. That's down from three hundred and twenty-five on the same solution app preliminary design program. Again, equally important, the MSBA grant amount. We were a hundred and fifteen million dollars at schematic design. That has increased to a hundred and twenty-five million dollars. We do that by taking the preferred solution and we, we look to minimize ineligible costs and maximize eligible costs to make sure that we're obtaining the maximum possible grant from the state. As far as where this project lands in the MSBA's pipeline, we are right in the average, if not a, a little bit below on a cost per square foot standpoint. Which is good because we have a big site, it's a sixty-eight acre site and the, the project also includes abatement and demolition of an existing building. So we're being priced out with other projects that don't have a sixty-eight acre site that they need to bring up to modern codes and they may not have an existing building on that site to abate and demolish. The, the next step for us is to really dive into the project cash flow. So we take the project schedule that I just touched on a high level. We cost load it out month by month and we're not only looking at the district's out-of-pocket cost, but we're looking at the anticipated MSBA grant payments, which occur on a monthly basis. The districts don't need to borrow the full value of the project costs. You only need to borrow your share and what you need at any given point in time. So working with financial advisors and bond counsel the school has on board, we map out this cash flow needs and we're able to provide a district share tax impact projection. In Dyton's case, and this is again right on the website, you'll find a tax calculator where you can put in your own assessed value and it will tell you what the, the tax impact is. So for Dyton, the, the twenty twenty-one average single-family home had an assessed value of three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. So remember assessed value, this is not current market value. For that average single-family home, the quarterly tax impact for the project is estimated at sixty dollars a quarter. And again, that's right on the website. Project schedule I already touched on and that's, that's all we have. I apologize, we weren't able to get the, the graphics working for you, but thank you very much for your time. Happy to answer any questions.
So I have a couple of questions. Did you cost, found out the cost for the renovation and additions?
We did.
And what was that?
So we had six different, I'm sorry, nine different addition renovation scenarios. For the current enrollment, they ranged from three hundred and thirty, three hundred and twenty-five million to three hundred and thirty-seven million. For the enrollment that we ended up with, the fourteen thirty-four, which represents around a ten percent increase from where they are now. The range on that was three hundred and thirty-eight million to three hundred and forty-nine million dollars. Yep, and that's a function of, as Bobby had said, just the, having to jump all around the building for these programs. What's more important on those is the MSBA grant contribution. Does not go up at the project cost because there's a lot of ineligible costs when we get into items like swing space and moves. Those are categorically ineligible through the MSBA, so they're a hundred percent in the district.
So you provided us with the impact on the tax rate and I just want some clarification on that. So saying at the beginning won't be, it'll be zero increase in our taxes. And then I see the next year is one cent per thousand. Am I correct? One, one cent per thousand?
Per thousand, yes.
Okay. But then the following year goes to fourteen and then it goes to sixty-six and then a couple of years later it goes to seventy.
Yep.
Cent. Is this cumulative? Is this cumulative?
No, no, it's not cumulative, that's for any given year. The reason that you see it ramp up is uh, as the project progresses and more construction goes in place, the amount borrowed higher.
So why is there a figure at the bottom of nineteen dollars and ninety-three cents?
That probably shouldn't be summed at the bottom. I don't think that's a cumulative column, it's probably just.
So when it's one cent, then it goes up to fourteen cents, it's really going up to thirteen cents, is that what you're saying? The following year, or is it?
Are you looking at the level funded?
Um, impact tax rate, so I see.
This was put together by um.
Yep.
So here, yeah, it's one, fourteen to sixty-six and it stays at um, seventy, uh, based on like a level.
Yep, so this is a level debt scenario, it is. So the maximum impact at the, the peak borrowing and level debt is seventy cents per thousand.
But is that cumulative every year or is it just stay, so once it hits seventy and it's seventy for a few years?
Yep.
Maybe twenty-some years. It stays at seventy cents, it doesn't, like the following year is not a buck forty increase altogether?
Nope, it's seventy cents per year and then it's a thirty-year level funded uh, bond at current market rates is what they ran the projection at.
But this is still a lot to ask the residents of Dayton. Where we have to take in consideration all the other things we have, that, that we have to do in this town here. Uh, that this is only gonna be for the BP uh, project, we've got other things that may impact our taxes, we, we do our best to keep our taxes. Low since I've been on the board, I think the first year we increased it eleven cents per thousand and we haven't increased it since. And it's kind of a, I can't speak for the rest of the board, but that's kind of been our philosophy, to, to keep the tax rate as low as possible because. We're talking about people who are on a fixed income. Uh, that can't, wouldn't, wouldn't be able to uh, deal with this increase in, in their taxes. What happens if Dayton, I guess, I understand we get to vote on this, taxpayers, the residents in town get to vote on this. What happens if we uh, reject this?
Um, so the, the way it works under Massachusetts Journal of Chapter Seventy-One, Section sixteen N, which is what the funding authorization's moving forward under. Um, there'd be a district-wide ballot and it's the, the combined value of all the ballot votes received across the seven communities and it's a simple majority. So um, there is a scenario where one town could say no and six other towns say yes and the project moves forward.
That's too bad. Dr. Z?
So I understand you gave us the quarterly tax impact to the average household, my question is. What is Dayton's expected share of the two hundred and two million district share? Is it the one million, one hundred thirty-six thousand?
No, um.
You're talking about the total share?
Yes.
It's twenty-two million, six hundred and.
It's twenty-two point six million.
I see twenty-two million, six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and three dollars and eighty-eight cents.
And how, thank you, how is that calculated? Is that based on student enrollment?
It is based on enrollment, so uh, Latin, it changes every year, so as enrollment fluctuates, the, the Dayton's share of that debt could increase or decrease any given year.
So if we had more kids, I'm sorry, I just wanted to ask, so if we had more, I, I, I think we do actually have more children expected in the next year to go to BP. So does that mean the share goes up, so it may be more than the two hu- twenty-two point six million in total, like in the long run after everything is paid back, correct?
If your percentage enrollment increases, yep.
Okay.
That's correct. Um, so right now Dayton, the numbers that this is based on have a hundred and two students from Dayton now of the thirteen hundred.
And how many, this is my last question, shocker, how many options were originally created and chosen from? And I recall um, when we started the, I shouldn't say we, when you started the Aggie project, there were, I think, three?
It gets narrowed down to three after the PSR.
Okay.
PDP, so we, we started with about thirteen that we studied here and we narrowed down to three and we studied those three further and then we, at the end of that phase. Which is right, we go to schematic, we choose one of those three options to move forward with. So what you probably, Bristol Aggie also had a, a few more than three when we started, cause you, it is that exhaustive process of trying all renovations, all new, all different combinations and. You can see how many combinations we, we probably had at one point, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. C, has Lepin help?
Thank you. I want to preface my remarks by stating that I started my teaching career at BP. I also attended the first BP open house, so I totally understand how old this structure is. I'm also fully aware of the amazing job BP does in educating its students. However, I do have some concerns. Dayton currently faces a number of capital projects that if not planned and implemented well, will create a burden for the taxpayers. That may be overwhelming, especially for those on a fixed income. When I first heard about this project, correct me if I'm wrong, you're planning to use the current football field as the site of the school? That is correct. And in figuring your cost assessment, how much is? The renovation or creation of a new sports complex going to be in this total budget package? Because since you are taking over the football field, I would assume that you are going to be creating a new football field. And I can go down that road in regards to costs for a football field. Especially for a division five school. Especially where many students in vocational school are torn between their career pathway and playing sports. I'm not saying that to be critical, I'm saying that. In tight fiscal times, we have to be frugal. And I, and I, I would really ask that you take a look at the. The sports end of it, and I'm not against sports. But as I look at the project and what you have spoken about, you've talked about the educational plant and the requirements. At the state level about meeting code and the such. And I, I just wonder, and maybe you could share those numbers with us this evening. What is the sports aspect of this project and how much does it contribute to the overall cost? Thank you.
Um, it's an excellent question, so of the total project budget, the construction estimate's around two hundred and forty million dollars. And roughly ten percent of that is site work and site improvement costs. Uh, so generally a, a football field reconstruction of around that size is gonna run two to three million dollars depending on exactly what is put in its place. Um, that was not a, a primary consideration as we moved through the MSBA's process, uh, as you said, the educational program is always number one. Um, the reason that we ended up constructing on top of that football field was not to get a new football field, it was to not um, need to phase the existing building.
Are you going to be building a new gym or are you keeping the old gym?
There's a new gymnasium, yep, one of the scenarios that we studied uh, had salvage of the existing gymnasium and we flipped the new building onto the backside of the gym, so that, that was one of the study options.
The football field, grass or natural turf, or artificial turf?
Uh, we're currently carrying artificial turf, but uh, very early in the design, so that's subject to change.
Well, thank you.
I did uh, read in the paperwork that you provided us, are the ceilings in the classrooms asbestos? Did I see that?
Uh, I, I don't recall off the top of my head, there might be some abatement that has to happen, I know there's definitely significant abatement that has to happen with the existing school. Um, I don't recall if the ceilings were.
I don't think it was the floor.
I don't think it's widespread, no.
There's asbestos also, but not, not the actual tiles.
Okay. Where is the asbestos roughly?
We have asbestos.
The exterior, I think there's a lot in the exterior of metal panels that were put in, um, eh, so that, that's one of the big costs for abating that building as well.
It is the tile there that as long as I can get disturbed, we have.
Yep.
Thank you.
I have one last question.
Yes.
If that's okay.
No, it's, this is an important issue.
So this board has obviously expressed concerns regarding uh, Dayton's share of the project costs and my question is, just in general. Have you received feedback from residents and elected officials in other towns as you do your presentation regarding cost concerns?
We have, uh, it's, it's certainly a foremost concern even of ours as we work through this process and that's, that's why that one thousand five hundred and forty enrollment that was approved by the MSBA was dropped off the list. Was for cost considerations, um, so the, the district absolutely understands that there is. A need to get this project completed as uh, as responsibly as possible and we're, we're pushing towards that goal. Uh, as we work through the design, we'll, we'll continue with that goal in mind, we're gonna work to uh, reduce this overall budget and the, the impact to the member communities to the maximum extent possible.
Thank you.
Hey, just, my name's Alex Magley, I'm the superintendent, I'm sorry I came late, I actually went through the building by accident. Um, we, we understand that this is a, you know, quite a um, expensive project, uh, Diamond's doing one and, and Northeast is doing one as well, there's three vocational schools right now. Uh, we have been lobbying for additional funding, in fact, the legislature actually put a hundred million dollars, the wording isn't what we expect it to be, cause we really want. We really asked for three hundred million dollars, one hundred million dollars for each school. Because what the, the, the MSBA is making is required to do as far as space in comparison to what they do with elementaries, it's almost like, you know, you guys are the same, some buildings are building, which is not. You know, partial, cause they're making us, our shops are much greater than a classroom. Um, so there is some lobbying going on, uh, you know, you, so we're not, we, we, you know, we're hearing from towns that are, you know, that this project's. Uh, quite a bit of money and I understand that, but we are trying to uh, minimize that by lobbying some uh, additional funding and it may come, you know, um. Soon and it may, I don't, I'm not sure, but it's still in the legislation and they're still kind of working that. Uh, there are, so we are calling all our legislators, we're calling all state representatives to support this um, you know, uh, piece. To provide it in additional funding for our building projects, especially these three that are on board on the MSBA's uh, pipeline, just wanted to.
Thank you.
Uh, as far as numbers, you know, again, it's, there is a town that wants to be, come to join us and that's uh, Free Town and you'll be getting uh, letters from us. Probably within the next couple of months that are looking to join our, our district, which then would also help some of that, um. You know, uh, there's another, gonna be another town hopefully supporting the project if it goes through. Uh, but there, there's, there's another town that wants to uh, join our district.
Where do those uh, students go now, they go to Diamond in Free Town?
Uh, there, there is, uh, yes, they were going Free Town, um, uh, they go to Oak Colony. Uh, but they're tuition-based, they don't belong to any regional school, they were actually in our regional agreement uh, back in the sixties and uh, and then they, they never signed it, so. They're starting to, they want to come in and we're now um, negotiating with the Desi and, and working with the uh, regional agreement. To uh, put them on the original agreement, go to all the towns, if supported by all the towns, very similar to the way this project is, they'll be very similar to what, how Dayton hoped to get in. A few years back, uh, they were, they were looking to get in and that was, you know, so as far as numbers go, it almost, it almost stays the same. Cause they have about a hundred students as well that would go to Oak Colony, so that, that fourteen hundred that we picked was, you know, kind of in, in hindsight for that, to keep everything pretty much the same. And hopefully, you know, like you talked about how you're, you're assessed, you're assessed, you're right, you're assessed numbers, but it can fluctuate, it can go low, it can go high as well and uh, there's gonna be, you know. That option.
Do we know when this, this is gonna go to the voters, maybe you can answer that, do we have any idea when the uh, voters will have an opportunity?
The um, the, the school committee uh, voted uh, to go to on January ninth, I believe it was on Saturday, right? Eighth, eighth, January eighth, however, we are meeting with all the town clerks and seeing some of the, I know they have some uh, concern, like I guess there's some redistricting going on and. From the census, so we're gonna take that into consideration, we're gonna meet with them on Monday and then uh, and then that will be, be brought up to the school committee. And it's up to the school committee then to decide what to change, but I believe we're up to, you know, once the MSBA uh, gives us the go on the October twenty-seventh. Then we have up to thirty-five, well, minimum thirty-five days, it can go a little longer, so we, we, we're listening to the, to some of the concerns that the uh, clerks have as well.
Any other questions, Lepin Hall?
Is there a citizen building committee involved in this project at this time?
Citizen building committee.
There's a school, there's a school building committee.
School building committee, yes, 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 that's, that's, that's who's, you know, that's worked this whole. You know, through the COVID time and everything, there were, there was the uh, school building committee, school building committee then makes a lot of these decisions and then recommends that a school committee.
Um, do you have? A plan that you could share with us dollar-wise?
Plan of dollar.
In regards to the costs per the room, school. Um, I shouldn't say your school, but the individual breakdown of expenses, you came up with numbers, obviously there must be a budget breakdown.
Cost estimate.
Okay, that's, that's.
We have two cost estimates, yeah.
Okay.
And there's a summary sheet that kind of.
Great, would you be able to share that with uh, Mr. Mullin? Town administrator, Mike Mullin?
Of course.
Okay, so that our building people can take a look at it and uh, let us know if there are some potential cost-saving measures that could be implemented.
Well, you know, and I hope it can, cause you, you know, one of the things we've talked about, if there's a savings and we don't, even though there's that money that, you know. The max that MSBA is gonna give and the max that we put on ourselves, two things can happen, that, you know, there's been some, a lot of cases that we go on the budget and I'm, I'm hoping this is the case as well. And but, you know, with, with, the way it is, the way it looks, things go, are happening now, the cost doesn't seem like, you know, the longer you wait, you know, we're gonna stay with this, but the. It's not gonna be cheap and we may have to start cutting back in things anyway because of the way the, cause now, now this is a fixed number for us, for us, right? So, but if costs keep going up the way things are going now and when we start this up in twenty-four, twenty-five. Who knows what metal's gonna cost and what labor's gonna cost and, 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 you know, we may have to look at downsizing, we may look at not putting, nothing but a grass, you know, field again and. You know, and, and cutting back some of the things that uh, you know, that may last that we have to uh, cut back, so we understand that too. Uh, my, my fingers are crossed that if this project does go through, that it's on the budget and uh, and, and efficient and.
There's a difference between wants and needs. And Dayton, as I mentioned, has many capital projects. Um, and it could create a problem.
Well, yeah.
Saying that, look at, you know, sharpening the pencil, taking a look at numbers, that would be a big help in selling the project in Dayton.
I appreciate your um, insight, but I, you know, I will say that, uh, you know, we've been um, been coming through these committees since uh, you know, twenty seventeen, telling us saying that. Our buildings have not, you know, a roof has been overdue, uh, we have a lot of maintenance that has to be done. And here's an opportunity for uh, you know, a grant that if we lose out on this grant, there's things that need to be done in this building. We can't wait any longer either, um, as far as you talked about necessities, I can't have holes in the roof and then, and then things are gonna stop happening, it's just. We haven't, we have to start taking care of the building itself if, if it doesn't go through. And not to say it'd be a, you know, a disgrace at all, but.
Does the board have any other questions? If not, you all.
To add one last thing.
Yeah.
Um, I obviously agree with everything that my colleagues have said, but I hope that you didn't interpret anything I said to be uh, that. Uh, I'm not supportive of the project or don't think it's needed, it's just that Dayton will have a share of the Aggie school, we have our own um. Enrollment needs and infrastructure needs with the Dayton Middle School and the elementary school, um, and so we just have to balance everything and I'm not even talking about. Fire station and highway garage and all the other, um, and library and all the other needs, so um, I, we just have to balance everything and be realistic about what we think is possible and what isn't, so.
No, it's, 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 you know, it's, it's, it's not unusual for a vocational school. Uh, cause we have to go to all the towns and cities that are part of the district, it's not like where your school and, you know, you have to worry about us, right? Uh, Florida is facing the same thing, Northeast Metro that's going through, they're facing the same thing, cause everybody says their, you know, their projects in their own towns that they've either built. Example, Middleboro just built a high school themselves, you know, so I, you know, we tend to be the other, you know.
I understand.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Next agenda item is a public hearing, uh, there's a request for an entertainment license uh, for the seventeen twelve Restaurant Tavern on eighteen eighty-one County Street and. And they're asking for, be able to have a disc jockey as well as karaoke. And they uh, would like to also be able to schedule a band when requested, is there someone representing uh, seventeen twelve here? You wanna, please come to the.
Hi, Alec, on the Zoom, on the Zoom is a Bruce Atwood as well, but the Zoom is messed. Hi, Alex, on the Zoom, on the Zoom is a Bruce Atwood as well, but the Zoom is messed up, but I, 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 like, I think he's there still, so he should be able to speak in if needed.
Should be able to hear us.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, Board of Selectmen, town. My name's Lisa Atwood. My husband and I own the Seventeen Twelve Restaurant, and we're just looking to acquire an entertainment license. Not anything banned once a week, to be quite frank, we don't have the staff for that. We'd like to have them entertainment once or twice a month.
At what time will it end?
Oh, probably would end around ten-thirty, eleven o'clock.
So begin after seven, or seven or after, and end about ten? I shouldn't say about, it will end at ten, or?
I would say between ten and ten-thirty.
Does the board have any questions about this?
My question is actually, are there any bylaws in regards to closing times for entertainment in this community?
No, no, there is not.
Okay.
I think we do it specific for whatever license that comes before us. You have any questions?
I don't. May I make one comment?
Yes.
Thank you. So I was fortunate enough to attend an event that you had, I think it was pre-pand, it was actually right before everything got shut down, and I thought it was a great event. And so if you are inviting Neil Madeiras' band back, I will be there. But what I also wanted to say is, I also recall that at that time, the neighbors also didn't have any issue with the event, and so I'm fully in support, as long as, you know, our neighbors are okay with it.
Anybody from the public wish to speak on that? I do see some neighbors. You, would you come up to the microphone, please, and identify yourself and give us your address?
My name is Donna Burdos. I finally changed it. I live on Pleasant Street, which is right down the street from your restaurant, and I think that would be an awesome idea to have music in our town in a restaurant. We don't have to drive, gas prices are going up, right? So I'm all for it, and I'm a neighbor, I'm right down the street.
She'll be there, too.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to? Jeff?
Mr. Alley. I don't have any concerns with the ban, but what I would like, if there are going to be any restrictions to this permit, I'd like them written into the permit, make sure that they understand, and that when the band comes marching through the door, they're told of these restrictions. Too many times you get a permit, the band doesn't know what they are, and they play on, okay? I live next to that building, and I don't want to hear the boom-ba-boo-ba-bah.
Well, that wouldn't be Neil's level, anyway.
Not so much boom-ba-boo.
I go boom-ba-boo, you know.
So they represented that they would have the band end at ten-thirty? I would like that to be written into the license if we do approve it.
I don't, I don't care when they end it. I just don't want to hear the boom-ba-boo-bah, you know.
It's the level of the noise, Mr. Alley.
Keep it down, you know. It's like when you go to a wedding, they play nice music, and all of a sudden the bride comes by you, and they boom, goes, okay. Too many times the permits are issued with no restrictions, and all hell breaks loose. For this time, I want the restrictions on the thing, and we stick to two.
Yeah, we just have to.
And if they understand, nothing against these people, because they've done a great job, but the ban knows.
Mm-hmm.
So when the ban hits higher, or the disc jockey, they can tell them, here it is.
Correct. So exactly what is it that you don't want to hear? Was it boom-bam?
I don't want to hear anything.
I want to put that in the.
Boom-ba-boo-bah, nothing.
I want to put that in the license. So is there a decibel, is there a decibel level that?
I understand, decibel level depends on where you want to be in the community, eighty-five to ninety-five decibels.
And that's considered reasonable?
That's a normal hearing.
May I ask a question?
I think Selectman Hall had his hand up.
This is more towards town officials. I'm getting an easy feeling here. Do we have a bylaw governing or a policy governing the granting of entertainment license? Because it seems like, what I'm hearing is, we're making it up as we are going along this evening.
There was something in place when it had the par three restaurant down here.
Okay.
Okay? I can't tell you it was a law or a bylaw, but there was.
I can.
Not even an agreement between the fist fights to Holland and whatnot.
Well, but the thing is, if you already have a policy in place.
Yeah, improve on it.
Well, there's a process for that.
Yeah.
But my saying is, if we're going to grant a license to Seventeen Twelve, it must be consistent with either a bylaw or a policy.
May I, may I please interject?
And if there isn't, then down the road, we really should establish one, because our goal for this community, the goal of the Dayton Development Industrial Commission, is to grow this town in many different areas. And I am hoping down the road that there will be other establishments. Currently Seventeen Twelve is the only restaurant in town, full restaurant. And for this town to grow, we need to have a consistent application of a policy or bylaw so that we don't get sued.
So if I may.
I may add, you know, I live next, they've done great, they really have. And, you know, there was a few little pinks with the lighting, they corrected it, I went over and spoke to them, been no problems. I just want to make sure that the band knows.
Correct, yeah, well.
Not the owners, the band.
If there were conditions on the permit, it would be incumbent on the owner of the establishment to inform the entertainers of those conditions, correct.
That's all.
To answer Selectman Hall's point, I don't believe there is a specific bylaw governing entertainment licenses, and we have not had many come before me since I've been here. However, for things like noise, there are, and we have the chairman of the Board of Health, there are established state regulations that the Board of Health has adopted that govern things like noise, and it lays it all out, they've adopted certain sections, so some of those things are governed under those state regulations that have been adopted. But regarding the entertainment license, we can have a bigger conversation going forward about maybe how we want to proceed, but I just want to say, for my own vote tonight, I guess, I don't, I don't have any specific concerns because, simply because I know you live next door. I didn't hear any complaints about the last event a year or two ago. I was there, it was, you know, orderly, everybody left on time.
They do a great job. They really do. But I'm not concerned about them, they know what's going on. I'm concerned about the band, the hiring. People laugh at this, but how many bands have you heard start off nice, easy music, and then all of a sudden by the end of the night, you can't even hear yourself think?
It's going to be their responsibility to make sure that the band knows how loud it can be, and if there is a complaint.
They're not doing something wrong, they're doing great.
Right. But if there is a complaint about that, then they come back before us, and we have, we have a right to take that license away.
Right.
So I think they fully understand that that's their responsibility. Mr. Marv.
Yeah, just a quick comment. I know a lot of towns, before the pandemic hit, usually they had the music around eleven o'clock, and it used to be the standard. So I don't know if we can follow that. You know, ten-thirty on a Saturday night, I'd say give them another half hour, eleven o'clock, you know, if things come to a close, better it's music.
Yeah, I don't think I've seen ten-thirty on a Saturday night in a long time. For those that do.
The chief has.
Yes.
Chief McDonald, please, the last time they did this, which was right before COVID, Dr. Z said, before they did all this, to set this up, myself, Chief McGee, the building commissioner, Jimmy Agia, went down there, and they showed us exactly where they were going to put the band, where things were going to be set up, what doors, evacuate, they had to evacuate. They also had somebody there taking a head count to, so many people could be in that building, and that's what they did. And they worked with us really good with the department, fire, police department, fire department, all of us, and we had no complaints about it at all that time. Everything went well, I guess, so, you know, I can't say if it'd be a problem. And they said, you know, if there is a problem, they will call us, and if they have this, and they have a problem next time or something, they are no problem, put an officer, detail officer in the building. So they work with us, so I can't see it being an issue here.
Selectman Hall.
This question is for Chief McDonald. Currently, does the police department have a policy about noise reduction after a certain hour? You get a complaint from?
It's not, it's not police department policy, it's, I believe it's a town bylaw, if they have it in there.
It's not.
So what happens here is, if we get calls, both noise complaints, and we get several calls on it, five, six calls from different people, we'll respond there, and we tell them we have to shut it down. It has to, it has to be shut down. So that's the way we do things when we get, when we get calls like that.
So I just wanted to add, if I may, there again is a state regulation that the Board of Health adopted that has specific times when there has to be no noise, and it's delineated in the state law, and it's enforced by the Dayton Police Department, and we have forwarded that, and I believe it was Mrs. Brady who forwarded that to you, so that the police department understood what the authority was governing those noise complaints.
Selectman Hall.
I was just wondering, what is the time?
It is, I believe, nine PM. I think it's from nine to either five AM or six, six AM is a quiet, considered a quiet time.
From noise, seven, can I start at seven or one?
It's, I don't know the exact, it's five, six, or seven.
Seven or one, she was right about that, seven or one.
And it says, like, no lawn mowers, like it delineates the types of noises that are not acceptable.
So you're not seeking an entertainment license for Sundays, Monday through Saturdays, am I correct?
Correct.
Any other questions? Any other comments from anybody?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Agia.
Jim Agia, Building Commissioner. Just so we're staying consistent with what surrounding communities are doing, I have the most experience in metro and suburban areas. Typically, in the downtown areas, entertainment goes to midnight to one o'clock, and in the suburban areas, it's eleven PM. It's never before eleven PM, so.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we, bear with me just a second, we approve the entertainment license for Seventeen Twelve Tavern at Eighteen Eighty-One County Street, as requested, with one condition, that, I don't know how to word this properly, that bands stop playing at eleven PM.
Second.
Is that, that's okay for the business? Okay.
Is there any discussion on that? If not, I'll call for a roll call vote. Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Um, okay. Maybe my glasses out here, having trouble with us, there we go. So I'm here tonight to recommend a full-time officer in the police department. Recently, we lost an officer, so I'd like to replace this officer. Myself and Lieutenant Cronin revisited the testing and interview procedure already conducted last spring. We've selected a candidate for conditional employment right now, as, right now. A background check was checked by Detective Richards, and after compiling all the data, recommended the fallen candidate be considered conditional employment at this time as a full-time officer. It's Julie Horton. Julie, right now, is a reserve with us. She's been like six, seven months with us. Since she's been here, she, she works a lot of hours, she puts her time in, she does a great job, so I'd like to consider her as conditional employment. As far as her going to the police academy, we've been looking into academies, they book so fast, the other towns and cities that put people in there. Luckily, we got Academy in Randolph, which starts January seventeenth.
Reporting in progress.
So I'd like to, I'd like to get her in there, and we did get her in there on time. Lieutenant Cronin did all the, the background, all the work to get her in, so if she can be a conditional employee at this time, and she can start the police academy January seventeenth. Her testing, the proper, she needs medical, physical, she's already got that, psychological, she already did that when she became a reserve, because we make the reserves do that when they become that, in that position. She completed that, so I'd like to have her start January seventeenth in the Randolph Police Academy for the police department.
And when would you like her to start as a police officer in?
Well, she can't, right now, you, you can't work on a waiver anymore. You have to be, work at least a year as a reserve. She hasn't worked a year, she's only been there, like I said, seven months, six months, eight months, whatever it is. So we can't put her in as a waiver to work in a capacity as a full-timer. So if we can get her all the testing done and everything, she could still work as a reserve for like another month, then she can get herself ready, get all the equipment she needs, we'll get her going for that, so she can start the academy on the seventeenth.
Board have any questions?
I do, just about what you said about the year. Was the town of Dayton Officer Horton's first reserve officer position?
Yeah, she.
Okay, so that's why they don't have a year, okay.
Yeah, she was a reserve, and she, her status right now still is a reserve.
Thank you. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Did you have a question, Selectman Hall? Oh, I thought, I saw your hand up, sorry. Mr. Chairman, I motion that we appoint Julie Horton, I believe it's Julie, it's Julie.
Julie, yeah. Julie, Julie.
Julie Horton of Witten, Mass. as a full-time Dayton police officer pending successful completion of basic recruiting academy in Norton.
Randolph.
Excuse me, Randolph.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a roll call vote. Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye.
Congratulations, even though, I hope she's watching.
Thank you.
Or she's working.
No. I had spoke to Town Administrator Mullin about if she should be here, and we said that, you know, she's going to be a conditional player if the board agrees to it, and then when she completes everything, we'll get her back here, and we can have her sworn in and do all that.
Yes, absolutely.
It would be good.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks.
So you have?
Give another item?
Yeah.
I believe so.
So this next one is due to a appointment that was put in in July, end of June, when you guys did all your reappointments for, for the police department. So Lieutenant Cronin, who's our training officer, goes through all the records of everybody and what they, you know, their training they're doing, and what happened was here is Special Officer William Perry, he looked back on his in-service training requirements from twenty twenty-one requirements, and he did not attend that requirement. Speaking to Lieutenant Cronin, according to him, he does not have a record of Officer Perry completing his mandatory training, and also indicated that he sent emails, texts, phone calls to Officer Perry to respond to, get him set up to attend a, a training class, and he never responded back. So that was last year's in-service. So we've already started in-service for this year, so he didn't even complete that from last year. So, so I'm looking at, you know, until he completes that, we can reappoint him again, or how the board wants to handle this, or how, you know, in speaking to him, if he still wants to stay as a special police officer. He, he was a full-time officer for years here, and, and he was, he did a good job. I mean, the guy was good. He retired, he went on, and now he became a special, which anybody in a full-time capacity can be in that special to work details or whatever, you know, he chooses to do, but they still have to do certain things, and it wasn't completed last year. So I think maybe at this time, if we can talk to him, or we, if he, you know, and set something up, if he does want to come back, or he wants to stay on a list as a special, he can, but he'll have to complete these requirements. So I'm just letting the board know that right now, it's not, it wasn't done last year.
Does the board have any questions?
I have one. I know that former Sergeant Dutra is a special police officer, so how many do you need? Like, I guess my question is, I think we have usually had two, but if Mr. Perry is not one, and it's only former Sergeant Dutra who is the special police officer, is that enough for the police department?
Yeah.
Do you need to have more? I guess it's my question.
No. No, we don't, because we have a status as reserve. We have six, six reserves right now, so a reserve, of course, works the cruiser and he patrols, whereas the special doesn't do that. He works a detail and that's basically what they do.
Okay.
So there's a certain requirements, Lieutenant Cronin, that they have to do.
Correct.
It's not a lot, but they have to do some things and it, it wasn't done from last year.
And I know that reserve officer positions were or are impacted by the state police reform law and I guess my question is, were special police officers affected?
A special, all a special has is required to do is, he has to have CPR first responder and do the firearms, fire, the range, to qualify.
Okay.
That's basically what he is. But I think he has to do, I believe, another program where there's some courses that he has to take and speaking to Lieutenant Cronin, I'm not sure which ones they are, but they have to do some of those too. So that has to be now because of reform coming out and it's all, it's all changed.
Thank you.
Let's just remember, we're talking about this particular individual. Selectman Hall?
I, I question the wording. Recent or suspend? Has, has there been a process of certified letters sent to him?
No, it hasn't.
If you rescind, he would have to reapply again, is that correct?
I believe so.
But if you suspend and he met the terms of employment, he could be reinstated, is that correct?
Could.
Well, he could be reinstated even if he's, this is rescinded, right? If he comes back and say, hey, look, I want to be a special police officer, I've done all the, the work.
Yeah.
He applies again.
No, in answering your question, no, he has not been sent a letter on this, but he has been sent emails by what Lieutenant Cronin is telling me. Emails, he's been called and text on the phone and he's getting no response from them. So if this board maybe thinks we should send a letter to him to, to, to see his attentions and if he wants to stay in this disposition, that he must, he's got to complete this. But the reason I brought this here is because he was reappointed by, by you, you board
Understood.
I mean, in, end of June for the upcoming year. So he, right now, he can't work.
Yes, correct.
I don't know if you leave it this way or should, should a letter be sent to him?
Well.
Selectman Hall said?
May I, so I, I think we send, I'm sorry.
Yes, so has he been doing any details?
No.
So I think that answers that.
He hasn't worked, actually, I asked him today and the schedule.
Yeah.
I didn't get a day from him, but I asked him and the schedule, he just said it's been a while since he worked, so but he hasn't worked in a long time.
So I think we have a compromise. I think, to answer your question, Selectman Hall, I think suspension sounds more like a disciplinary thing, so maybe we don't want to do that. But what I do agree with is, since we obviously couldn't get through, and, and I'm gonna make a motion to rescind the appointment, obviously, because if they don't have the requirements, then they should not be appointed to do the job, right? However, I do think that we should send Mr. Perry a letter, because obviously, maybe he didn't get the phone calls or the emails, so let's send him a certified letter, just let him know that we had to, had to rescind his appointment and let him know what the requirements are and let him know that we are open as a board to reappointing him as a special police officer pending successful completion of those requirements.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we rescind the appointment of Special Police Officer William Perry and that we send Mr. Perry a certified letter letting him know of the rescension. I don't know if that's a word, sorry, Selectman Hall. And what the requirements are that he needs to complete in order to be reappointed, if he so chooses.
Second?
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a roll call vote. Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Selectman, Mr. Crofis?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Public input. Anybody wishes for public input? Mr. Pius.
Good evening, everybody. Tom Carter, City District Twenty-three, Mills Lane, Dayton. As I listened to that conversation, I nearly called a point of order. I think we were very close of challenging his integrity. The police officer, he was a good officer in the town of Dayton. I understand it ended up being a good solution, but I would caution the board in the future that I don't think we should be critical of, nobody knows why he didn't do this and I think we became very critical of his character and integrity. So I just wanted to make that point going forward.
Yeah, I didn't get that interpretation at all. I had worked with Mr. Perry when I worked in the courthouse. He went there many times representing the town of Dayton. I'd never had a problem with him. I, well, let me leave it at that, so. Any other public input? Is there anybody on Zoom that wishes public input? I guess not. Next agenda item is the Veterans Day Proclamation. A proclamation, whereas since Dayton's colonial days, hundreds of men and women have served our country in defense of freedom and liberty and whereas on November eleventh, nineteen eighteen, the armistice was signed in the forest campaign by the Allied nations in Germany, ending World War One, the war to end all wars after four years of conflict. And whereas since that day, every November, people from around the nation have gathered to honor our veterans and whereas there are approximately four hundred and twenty veterans living in the town of Dayton. And whereas today, we are reminded of the great sacrifices and contributions our veterans have made to our country and whereas we honor and salute those who served our country throughout the generations with honor, patriotism, and courage. And whereas it is appropriate that all Massachusetts citizens remember the bravery of those who served their country, so that dedication and sacrifices serve as a reminder of the cost of our freedom. And whereas in November twenty twenty-one, the world will commemorate the hundred and third anniversary of the armistice that ended the fighting in the World War One at eleven AM, November eleventh, nineteen eighteen, the eleventh hour of the eleventh day of the eleventh month. Now therefore, the Board of Selectmen of the town of Dayton, Massachusetts will hereby proclaim November eleventh, twenty twenty-one to be Veterans Day and is signed by the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Campuchico, the Clerk, Selectman Hall, and a member of Dr. Sroffus. I will entertain a motion to approve this proclamation.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the Veterans Day Proclamation with thanks and appreciation to all of our Dayton veterans.
Is there a second? Any discussion? If not?
Thank you.
If not, I'll call for a roll call vote. Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. In this, Dr. Z will be giving the announcements. Obviously, we have a Veterans Day celebration tomorrow and this proclamation will be read tomorrow also.
Awesome.
I'm gonna take that.
Thank you.
So Dr. Z, would you read the announcements, please?
Yes, bear with me just a second. Got to scroll. My apologies. Okay. The town of Dayton presents a Veterans Day celebration tomorrow, Thursday, November eleventh, at eleven AM at Veterans Memorial Park, Nine Seven Nine Somerset Avenue, Dayton, Mass. Zero Two Seven One Five. Join us to honor all those who served our country. Hannaford's is offering a ten percent off full shopping trip to all veterans on November eleventh, twenty twenty-one tomorrow. Please identify yourself to the cashier as a veteran, active-duty military, or family member and receive a ten percent discount on your entire purchase, and again, that's tomorrow only. The Dayton Lions Club Food Bank Distribution will be held next at eight AM on Saturday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-one.
That's incorrect, it's November twentieth.
Oh, thank you, that's what was wrong with the agenda. Okay, they sent a different one out. I did not re-download that, sorry. Do you mind reading the list of elected officials and the list of boards? Thank you.
Sure. Elected, elected officials terms that are expiring next year. The Board of Assessors, the Board of Selectmen, this Dr. Sroffus, the D.R. School District Committee, Rachel Dingus, Housing Authority, Annabelle Powell, Parks and Recreation, David Rosa, Planning Board, Joseph Figurito, Public Library Trustee, Eva Marie Cabral, Sewer Commissioner, Paul R. Jolly, Town Clerk, Town Collector, Mary Hathaway, Town Moderator, Scott Dingus, and Town Treasurer, Mary J. Hathaway.
Thank you.
You want me to read a list of?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I can't find it.
List of boards committees with vacancies. The Board of Health needs one person. Cable Television Committee needs one person. Capital Outlay Committee needs one person. That person will be appointed by the Finance Committee. Cemetery Commission is one person. Commission on Disabilities needs three. Finance Committee needs two. Human Rights Committee needs three members. Land Use Committee needs two members. Open Space Committee needs three members. Superintendent of Pest Control, we need. TIF Review Board, we need two. And as long Board of Appeals, we need one member. Our next agenda item is the Committee Spotlight on the Board of Assessors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting me here to talk about the Board of Assessors. I'm sure it's every taxpayer's favorite department at town hall and I'm sure they love it when you do a really, really good job. So I'll try to keep it under an hour and get us out of here quickly, but there's so much information here to go through. I'm not sure I can do that, but I'll do my best. So the Board of Assessors for the town of Dayton is an elected three-member board, each serving a three-year term. The primary function of the Board of Assessors is to administer the fair and equitable taxation of persons and properties for the purpose of levying property tax per Mass. General Law, Chapter Fifty-nine and the Constitution of the State of Massachusetts. Board members must be qualified to perform the statutory duties of an assessor and the majority of our board must be qualified to classify property for the town in order to set its tax rate. In order to be qualified, assessors must meet the assessment performance standard established by the DLR, Department of Local Services, for the qualification of assessors within two years of their election or appointment. We fulfill this standard by completing DLS Course One O One, which is this book that I have here with me, Assessment, Administration, Law, Procedures, and Valuation, and pass all associated learning assessments within two years. There's ten modules to the assessment, to the learning assessment. So I have a list of some of our duties and I have an overview real quick. So the assessors are responsible for assessing property tax, obviously, which is the major source of revenue for most communities, as well as miscellaneous excise taxes assessed in lieu of personal property taxes, such as motor vehicles, boats, and farm animals. That's a new one. I didn't know farm animals were a tax.
Sorry, I'm on Zoom again. It's not me. It's fun this week today.
Can I go now?
I love so much. You messed up your whole flow.
No, that's good, I needed a break. I was out of breath. All right, so farm animals and farm animal excises. Assessors also play a key role in special assessments and betterments. So our list of duties are, we value property, we determine tax growth, we set the tax rate, we assess taxes, we abate and exempt taxes, we oversee the overlay account, we commit original apportioned betterments and special assessments, we commit delinquent municipal charges, and we assess and administer excises. So I was gonna read just two of those that people might be interested in. I wasn't gonna go through the whole thing. So for valuing property, assessors must value all real and personal property within their communities as of January one each year. They may perform this work with their own staffs or they may hire professional appraisal firms. By law, assessed values are based on fair cash value, which is the amount a willing buyer would pay a willing seller on the open market. The fair cash value standard protects the property owner's constitutional right to pay only his or her fair share of the tax burden. The valuations are used to fairly allocate the taxes needed to fund each year's budget among the community's taxpayers. The Department of Revenue reviews a community's values every five years and certifies they reflect current fair cash values. Assessed valuations in the intervening four years must also reflect current market value, but they're not certified by the DOR. And the other one was to set the tax rate, which is what we're doing now. Assessors set the annual tax levy and tax rate each year for the city or town and any water, fire, light, or improvement districts in the municipality by submitting the tax rate recap to DLS for approval. The recap displays the year's budgeted expenditures and revenues and establishes the amount that must be levied in property taxes to have a balanced budget. That's what I've prepared for you.
That's awesome.
Thank you. Any questions?
I thought that was pretty thorough, to be perfectly honest. May I ask a question about, will?
I thought he was thorough.
Oh, too late.
When we have set the tax rate, we have, usually have a joint meeting with the Board of Assessors and the Board of Selectmen. It's been tough, I'm just giving my own opinion, before you were on the board. In the past, it had been tough, because there wasn't really like a presentation or anything to really like guide us and I'm obviously not an expert in that. Will, this year, will there be some kind of like, I don't want to say presentation, but like guidance from the Board of Assessors for that?
Let me get with the other members and talk about that, but yeah, if you got, if you guys need something, you just let us know, speak up and, and we'll try to accommodate, because you know, we all have to kind of work together with all departments to put this thing together, to make sure everything, you know, comes together correctly.
Yep.
And on time, right? Because if things don't happen on time, it gets costly and you just can't have delays. So if there's something you need, just, yeah, speak up, for sure.
Selectman Hall?
One of the things that the assessors will be doing is appraising property values.
Right.
And in regards to that, what process will be used in selecting an appraiser?
That's probably a good question for Carol. Carol's been on the board for a long, long time, so I defer some of that to Carol.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't want to say the wrong thing and be wrong. I think Carol would have that answer.
Mr. Schoolout is on.
Maybe, maybe Nancy knows.
Mr. Schoolout, are you able to answer that question?
I have an awful time hearing you.
Hearing who?
Everyone.
Hearing the whole transmission. You keep going in and going out.
It has to be the computer.
So would you just, Mr. Hall is typing, I was in the kitchen. Could you please repeat, unless you had come into the other room?
Yes, Mrs. Gulat. It's my understanding that it is going to be necessary to hire an appraiser to establish property values. And with that in mind, what is, how is the selection process going to be done? Are they going out to bid? Do you have someone in mind? What is the process in hiring that person?
FY twenty-two has already been done. If you remember at the town meeting, we were not able to get the eight thousand dollar articles approved and that would be to start FY twenty-three valuations. The gentleman who does this work does just about every community around here, from Seacock to Free Town to Somerset, Swansea, name it. This gentleman has been doing this for the town, at least as long as I can remember. I don't know if he's still an assessor in the town of Donovan, but he's the expert in the area and he's hired on a professional basis, so now we know the vote to bid. He's been doing it so long that he knows the property so well that he's done an excellent job from what Mrs. Boradon has told me. So FY twenty-two, we'll be ready for the hearing on, I believe it's scheduled for December the eighth, the joint meeting of the Board of Assessors and the Board of Selectmen. And so it'll be in January of twenty-two. He will begin the work for FY twenty-three taxes, the valuation. And to, hey, Eric, you did a great job. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The other thing, the other thing I would say is, as far as the presentation goes, going back to my first classification hearing, it's not really a presentation, obviously, it's an open public meeting. But the Chairman of the Board of Assessors, on the designate, and Mrs. Boradon, I assume will do it this year, goes over the data that has been collected and what the recommendations were based on what work this gentleman has done. And you will have the opportunity to ask questions or anybody that's there can ask questions to open public meeting. or anybody that's there can ask questions at open public meeting. But certainly, as Mr. Easton said at the Board of Assessors meeting, we can talk about what kind of information will be presented that would be beneficial. But my question, I guess my request to you, to the Board of Selectmen is, if you have any specific questions, and I know Mr. Hall, this is going to be brand new to him, but if you have any questions at all, thinking about last year's presentation, if you could get them to Mrs. Schecter in the office so that we'll have something to talk about, you know what additional information you're looking for.
Thank you, Mrs. Goulart.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Easton Day for your presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you, gentlemen.
Does the public yet ask any questions?
Not at this time, no. Town Administrators report.
Are you, are you like, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have actually three quick updates. Number one, I wanted to, I'd like to actually give an update based on information that was provided to me this week by the health agent about our COVID cases in the last two weeks. We have only had 13 cases, so that, oh, yeah, it's really good news. In the state, as of January 1st, is making changes to the contact tracing requirements. So like, we're trying, I, I, together with the Board of Health Chairman, the health agent, and our public health nurse, we're trying, I, I'd like actually to set something up for next week to talk about, oh, yeah, how we deal with that, how we plan for that and everything else. So we're doing good there.
Thank you.
And then moving on to the Financial Management Analysis. I heard from DOR on Monday, and they actually just wrapped up, like, the last project they were working with, with the Town of Holliston, and they'll be starting, and they'll be starting our financial management review probably in the next week and a half, or they'll be reaching out.
Oh, nice.
Oh, yeah, so it's an exciting time. I can, we also, can we also have like our quarterly, we also had our quarterly financial team meeting actually yesterday. Oh, yeah, I could, if I could ask our town accountant to provide an update on that, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please. Ms. Vining? So the financial team, just so everybody knows, this is the Town Administrator Mike Mullin, Town Accountant Janelle Vining, Treasurer Collector Mary Hathaway, Principal Assessor Stephanie Schecter, and Assessor Carol Boradat, and Executive Assistant Karen Brady.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I'm Janelle Vining. I'm the Town Accountant. As Mike and Ken said, we met on Tuesday, which was yesterday, for our financial team meeting. So we're going to plan to meet quarterly and more frequently throughout the budget process. When we met, we also began to discuss kind of our plan for the FY23 budget and a timeline with our department heads and also the Board of Selectmen and the FinCom. Our plan is to review both year-to-date revenue and expenditure trends. We'll also plan and schedule our annual audit, and we are expected to be in process of completing the forms for the tax rate recap, which is also part of what the Board of Assessors does. And that's pretty much it. Any questions?
Board have any questions?
Just one comment, if I may. I just want the Town of Dayton to know how much, I know we... Everyone used to meet, you know, the department heads, but I think the focus that the financial team meetings have is really important for the town. And I think it's important for the town's ability to A, manage its finances, obviously, but also to project forward for future financial impacts and needs. So I just wanted to thank everybody for making it a priority, making a schedule, and sticking to it. And I think it will have, it will really pay dividends, so thank you.
You're welcome. That's the plan. Try to keep everyone on track.
Anybody else have any questions? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, on the old business, Town Administrators Evaluation Update. I believe you've given us...
Yes.
Your evaluation, and it's up to the Board now to do their own evaluation, and we'll be presenting ours at the December, if we approve December.
At December 8th.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
Will someone distribute the form to us?
Oh, yes.
And Selectman Hall is new, so if he, he may have questions about it. So if someone could make themselves available, just in case.
Absolutely. Thank you. That's a good point. I, yeah, like, need the form to do the evaluation, so I would definitely provide that.
And just further information, in the policy manual, there's an entire policy for the performance evaluations. So if you have any questions, you know, it might be answered in the actual policy as well.
Nothing. My experience, when I was on the school committee, they used a different evaluation tool. They used a goal base tool. So this will be a new experience for me.
Awesome.
But I'm confident.
You learned that.
Based on the quality of the performance I've seen so far, it won't be difficult. Thank you.
Thank you. I look forward to it. Thank you.
Hiding cards up his sleeve, I see.
Huh?
I said he's hiding cards up his sleeve, I see.
Thank you. The next agenda item is Selectmen's Reports and Comments. I understand, Selectman Hall, you had a report.
Yes, actually, I have three. I'll try to keep it within five minutes. First, on Thursday, November 4th, the Dayton Library had their monthly trustees meeting. The library has adjusted quite nicely to their two new locations. The trustees wanted to thank Mike Mullin, Dr. Z, Ken Pacheco, and Comcast for all of their help with the move. Library usage is up 10% from a year ago. 1,408 visitors came to the library in October. Most of this increase was from the children's section. The library's goal is to reach out to the adult community. They will be reaching out to Cooperative Productions to see if their adult population would be interested in library services for their six residential programs and daycare program, which are located in Dayton. Library trustees also said they are preparing a capital outlay proposal for submission by November 18th. They will be submitting a request for funds for a feasibility study for the new lib, potential new library. The library will also have extended hours on Saturday, November 27th, which is the tree lighting ceremony. Mrs. Claus will be a guest of the library on that day. And they thought, especially if the weather is cold, that people would feel more comfortable having a warm place to come inside. Dayton Water District Updates. There will be a special Water District Public Meeting on November 18th at 6:00 PM at the Dayton Middle School to vote on a potential rate increase. The 6:00 PM session will be public input and comment on this proposal. And at 6:30, there will be the official business meeting, at which time they will take a vote on that rate increase. The Water District is currently involved in negotiations with a developer in the Town of Somerset for the purchase of land, potential well sites on Milk Street and Brook Street that may address many of Dayton Water District's concerns in regards to water. The Main Street Water Main Project has been moved to the summer of 2022. They're still working out a schedule with Verizon and Comcast regarding pole movement or relocating some of the poles. Dayton DPW is ready to begin work once the Water District gives the okay. The Water District wanted me to ask for the public's help in completing its MIU meter reader repair project. I mentioned this last month. So far, 60% of the meters have been repaired. There was 1,000 that needed to be repaired. Those homes who received repair notices and have not set up an appointment with the District Office should do so immediately. Estimated water bills will be sent out to those homes since their meters are not working correctly, and those must be repaired for a more accurate reading. And lastly, the newly formed Dayton Development Industrial Committee. The Dayton Development Industrial Committee is now fully staffed with seven members, including a representative from the Planning Board, Taunton Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Bristol County Agricultural School. On Monday, November 18th, the committee will hear presentations, I'm sorry. On Monday, November 15th, the committee will hear presentations from both Serpette and the Taunton Chamber of Commerce, and will begin work on a strategic plan for business growth in Dayton. At their December meeting, the committee is planning a joint meeting with the Open Space Committee and the Board of Selectmen to review available land for recreation and business development. The goal here is to pool resources and strengthen the lines of communication as we move forward with our goal of increased business growth in the community. Thank you.
Any other reports?
I mean, I feel bad I didn't write it down. I'm going to have to step my game up.
You can wing it.
Better than anybody. So I just wanted to comment that the Open Space Committee, thanks to David Phillips, has a quorum. So we were able to meet again, which was really nice. And we filled in and brought our new, new member up to speed, also Mr. Berquen as well. And we will basically start working with Bill Napolitano, and not just working in a silo, working with planning and any relevant key stakeholders on several projects. One in particular is the Open Space Residential Design Bylaw. Bill Napolitano from Serpette already has some templates, and so that's what we're going to start working on. But I just want to make a comment. The Open Space Committee does not have any actual authority under Massachusetts General Law, like the Development Industrial Commission has. So we are a recommending body, which is why it's so important that we collaborate and work hand in glove with the other key stakeholders on things like assessing the inventory of land. What's advantageous, what's not? Can we hook up trails through land acquisition? Things like that. So those are the questions and the issues that our committee will be tackling. And again, we have a quorum, thanks to you. So I look forward to us making progress on all those initiatives. The other thing I wanted to comment is that thanks to our Town Administrator, we have a finalized itinerary for Congressman Ockingkloss's visit. I just wanted to be very clear with the public because a press release from Guilfoyle was released today. This is not a political visit. It's literally a visit to discuss the town's objectives, priorities, and needs, as well as our business communities, and how our federal and state delegation can assist us in meeting those needs. So I just wanted to comment about that as well.
And again, I want to thank you, Dr. Z, for scheduling this on my 50th wedding anniversary. My wife is willing to let me go to the meeting, so I'll be there.
Is she going to be waiting for me in the parking lot?
Could be.
Sternly worded discussion.
But no, I look forward to this meeting also. The next agenda item on the new business, I'd ask for a motion to table and continue to the next meeting the American Rescue Plan Act, consultant engagement for public safety technology, Clifton, Lawson, and Allen.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we table Agenda Item 12A until our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a roll call vote. Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Ken Pacheco is an aye. Next agenda item is the facility reservation request from Lindsay Waller. And she's requesting that she use the playground on November 13th, which is this Saturday, from 10 to noon. It's a fundraiser, it looks like, for collecting children's clothes and unopened food, diapers, and wipes. She would also like to collect donations to raise money for a new Dayton Elementary Middle School signed for the center entrance. And I understand, if I'm correct, that the school has been made aware of that request to...
I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes, I can hear you. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Awesome. I'm sorry I'm not there in person.
That's okay.
So I have been in touch with the school committee, the PTO, and recently the Dayton Lions. So as far as the sign goes, that is actually not going to take place on Saturday. It's strictly going to be for in-kind donations for the Amos House in Providence. So potentially on the next agenda at some point, but the sign for the Dayton Elementary Middle School is no longer on the table.
I noticed that this is not a nonprofit. Is that correct?
The Amos House is a nonprofit in Providence, Rhode Island, and that's what I'll be collecting the donations for. Not monetary donations, but clothing from baby to adults, and baby food, and the rest of the items that are listed on there.
Does the Board have any questions?
I don't.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the request to use the Dayton Community Playground as presented this evening.
Second.
Was there a request to waive a fee, or is...
I didn't see that. I was looking at the last page. There was nothing... There was nothing indicated.
Yeah, I didn't see that. Any discussion?
No. May I make a comment?
Sure.
So what I wanted to tell you was, I did not know you were back in town. I'm really happy to see that you immediately have jumped right back into community service. I'm honored to have graduated high school with you and to call you a friend, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
No discussion? I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Ken Pacheco is an aye. Next agenda item is 12C. Vote to approve and sign pilot agreement with ISM SOLA. If I remember correctly, it was not long ago, on November 1st, that the town residents voted to approve this pilot agreement. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I vote to approve the signed pilot agreement with ISM SOLA.
So are you making a motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay.
I just want to be, is that, I think we need to change the wording to authorize us to sign because the townspeople already voted to approve this, correct? We're not approving.
They authorize the execution by the Board of Selectmen.
So we are voting to approve this?
Yes.
Okay. I will second that.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, a roll call vote. Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Ken Pacheco is an aye.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on, I just wanted to, again, highlight the fact that thanks to the efforts of our former colleague, Assessor Goulart, the process has been changed where the town meeting vote occurs first, approval or not approval, then it comes to the Board of Selectmen to be signed. So I just wanted to thank my colleague for fixing that process. It's been much more streamlined since then, less headaches, and I... Thank you.
Didn't see that was a thumbs up. Thank you, Doc, excuse me, Mrs. Goulart. Next agenda item is request to volunteer for Veterans Services. Donald Hershey, who was our former Veterans Agent, is requesting to volunteer for the town for the Veterans Services, and I believe he'd be available on the Thursday of the week. And I know he's really interested in doing this. He's been doing this for a long time, and we appreciate that. time, and we appreciate that, so we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we appoint Mr. Donald Hershey, and bear with me just a moment, I just wanna get the wording right, as a volunteer with the Veterans Services Department. Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Hershey, I had a feeling, I told him this when I saw him at the Veterans Breakfast, I said, "I had a feeling you were never gonna really retire," so we had a good laugh about that, but in all seriousness, thank you, I know how passionate you are about veterans and veterans' needs and services, so we appreciate it, I know my father appreciates it, so thank you, it matters a lot.
Do we make, yeah, 'cause you were part of the discussion.
Aye.
Selectmen Hall, Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. The next agenda item is review, discuss, and act on highway department surplus equipment. There's been a request that we have one professional power, D, R, leaf-in-one, vacuum becomes surplus, the number is LLV39531. Can we take these both together, is another item on the one motion?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
It's all surplus equipment.
Sure, and the second, the additional surplus item is two 10-foot fixed plows, so I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we put into surplus the equipment as listed and prepared on the, in the packet this evening.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a roll call vote. Selectmen Hall?
Aye.
Selectmen Surprisus?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. The next agenda item is a joint committee meeting to discuss building impact fees, and I believe, now?
I requested this to be on the agenda. I'm gonna defer to you in a second, I requested this to be on the agenda based on, A, ideas that you have in your, to your credit, tried to run by us for probably a few years now, so apologies on that, but also based on different feedback that we heard on the, at the special town meeting, so I think it's time that we have a broad discussion with all the relevant stakeholders, conservation, border health, Tom, if you wanna be there, Mr. Chairman, planning, zoning, building, in all seriousness, on impact fees. We have non-40B subdivisions coming into town, we have public services that are being, I don't wanna say, I'll say tested, and we have planning we need to do, and this is an issue that has been raised as a possible deterrent, I don't know the right word, for maybe curbing some of that growth, so I wanna defer to you, as you are the expert.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you for revitalizing this. This is something that I brought to the board many, many years ago, and it was through my own dealings with development in other states, where local government implemented an impact fee on new development, specifically residential, and that was outside of the normal building permit fee, and those funds were directly to be used to offset the infrastructural needs by the development. So unfortunately, it's not something that we do here in New England, so it wasn't well-received back then, but I'm glad that we're gonna open up the discussion now. Just for, it can be used as a deterrent, I would agree with that, but more importantly, it creates a revenue stream that we can put directly into infrastructural needs or upgrades. I'll give you just a quick overview, had we implemented a $2,000 impact fee per building permit for new construction, we'd have a million dollars in that account today, and I've only been here for 12 years. So that said, we can generate quite a bit of income. Now, I don't know that we'll see that much development from now until, you know, the time I retire, but certainly there will still be some, so if we can look at this topic, engage discussion, bring all the stakeholders into, you know, one forum, and see if this is good for the community, I think it would have a benefit both from a deterrent and from a revenue source.
Selectmen Hall?
Dr. Z, I'm delighted to hear you put this out there for further discussion, it was a campaign goal of mine, and talking to a former selectman who also tried, Mr. Colonel Perry, there's definitely a need for this. As we go forward, we've already experienced some of the problems that development has caused for the schools and for the water district, and we need relief and we need some help with those problems. I also, from my involvement in Taunton government for many, many years, saw the many, many benefits that the city of Taunton has received as a result of these impact fees. We can take a look at the work at Hart's Four Corners in Taun, much of that came about, those improvements, as a result of impact fees. I look forward to the discussion, and I look forward to us selling it to the voters, so this can be approved, is most definitely needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would just ask that we have just a meeting on this subject and not
Yes.
Put it as part of our regular Board of Selectmen's meeting, because I think this is gonna be a lot of parties, it's gonna be a long discussion, so, and I'm not sure how soon you're thinking of having this.
I think it should happen sooner than, rather than later, because to your point, Mr. Commissioner, and I know this isn't gonna happen right away anyway, but we may have missed the spike, and so the faster that this is implemented, the more helpful it may be for other infrastructure needs that we may have.
Yeah, I think the timing is perfect, actually, at today's department head meeting, I indicated that there's a lull in permit count right now, let me rephrase that, the permit count is still there, we have a reduction in new construction permits, so right now's a good time to have this, but I would, I would say that we, we need to start the dialogue now, because eventually we'll come out of it, and we wanna be prepared.
Selectmen Hall?
Currently, there is a deterrent to growth in the southern part of Dayton, and that has to do with water. Once they are able to meet their water needs, that ban will end. What concerns me, as we speak, the new MBTA station in Far River is building, that rail line is coming. Dayton is a wonderful community, ripe for growth, we need to be able to control that growth, and although there's a lull right now, I see potential for great growth, and we need to control that, and if the impact fees work in that, great, but in addition, we mentioned earlier this evening, the elementary school and the middle school are at capacity, we're going to need more funding to deal with their needs as well.
May I make one last?
We're gonna have a hearing on this, we're gonna have a meeting on this, so what is it you wish to say?
No, I just wanted to say, in addition to controlling growth, it's also making the growth work for the town. That's the part that I think voters are gonna understand, is that the growth may happen, 'cause some things are built as of right, right? We can't control that, right? But we can make it work for us, for the other needs that we have, so it's taking a problem and making a solution to an even broader problem, which is our infrastructure needs, which is partly 'cause of growth, but...
Yeah, I'll just leave you with one last point, and then we'll let this...
Somebody did take my gavel away, so I'm not sure who it was.
It was me. I'll give it back after.
As someone who's witnessed the benefits of an impact fee, I've also been one who has paid an impact fee, and it was, it was enlightening to know that when I wrote the check, a year from then, I actually saw where the money was going, and there were infrastructural improvements right in my neighborhood. So if we're gonna do this, we have to have lineal thought processes, and we have to make sure we use the money where it belongs.
Exactly, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
In coordinating, I'm sorry.
No, we gotta, I don't think we're picking a date.
He's just gonna start pounding the table with this.
Oh, we're gonna be recording again in a minute, just so I don't...
Recording in progress.
What was it, Khrush, well, before your time, but Khrush to flick her shoe off, shoe off, and was it Khrusha? Yes. Selectmen Hall, yes.
In coordinating this, it would probably, we have department heads on different schedules that TA Mullen coordinate this, so that all the department heads that should be involved are at a time that works for everyone.
Yes, we can...
Oh, yeah, all the boards and committees, we can...
It's gonna be a lot.
Oh, yeah, in the next four weeks, I'd say, hopefully before the end of the year.
Yeah, we can maybe discuss this at the next department head meeting, at least maybe tip them off beforehand, that we're gonna discuss that, and then we, boards and committees will also have to be notified. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can you just take Selectmen Surprisus for listening and putting this on the agenda?
Took me three years, don't give me too much credit.
Well, go to his head.
Thank you.
The next agenda item is the Board of Selectmen's meeting scheduled for January through June 22nd. Has everybody had an opportunity to look at that schedule?
Yes, sir.
Any questions about that schedule?
Works for me, if it works for everyone.
And I understand that there's an interest in changing the dates for December meetings. Originally, they were scheduled for December 1st, the 15th, and the 29th.
Yes, sir.
And why are we, why is there a request to change that?
Oh, yeah, like on December, like on December 1st, there's actually like a planning board hearing, actually, they schedule now on the same night.
Did we schedule our meeting already, though, the December 1st meeting? Because we approved this back in June.
Yeah, like we had, however, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, like however, like as we all, like as we also heard from the assessors, we're, as we also heard from the assessors, we're planning for our tax rate meeting as well, oh, yeah, and something on December 1st would be too soon, so moving it to the 8th, and then, like, actually, other than having the 29th actually stay would work better.
My concern is, is that in the past, when we've gone four weeks without a meeting, our meetings went to 11, alarm went off, and all that kinda good stuff.
Yes.
And so we're gonna have four weeks of no meetings, and then we're gonna meet on December 8th, and if we can make a reasonable agenda
Yes.
For that meeting, because we've already got, you know, the tax thing is one issue, there's other issues that we've already scheduled for that meeting, I'm just concerned that that could be a very long meeting again.
Why is it, I'm sorry, Selectmen Pichiko, why is it four weeks? When's our next meeting, next week?
Nope.
For this?
It's December 8th.
Right.
Oh, we don't have a next, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, two hours is a Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Okay, yeah, so we understand.
Originally, you had a three-week...
That's why we had three.
Yeah.
Now I get it, yeah, yeah.
Before.
Well, I will tell the board, I will, please don't schedule this, but I will make myself available on the 1st if we need to have a meeting. And you, I don't know what Selectmen Hall's schedule like, but if you give me 48 hours, I can finagle it.
I'll be there.
So, did we reserve this room for December 1st for the Board of Selectmen?
We, I guess we had it out there, but then we also had a conflict with the planning board based on, like, the scheduling, a hearing that they had, because they have their meetings on the 1st and 3rd.
Yeah, of the Wednesday, yeah, of the month.
I see.
Can we not do the meeting in a different location, Mr. Chairman?
Well, I wanna make sure the public have, you know, is aware that...
Well, it wouldn't be inaccessible.
At prime time, we have everything set up at prime time, that's accessible as well.
Okay. So my thing is, the hearings are the most important, right? Because that's where the public has been invited, so I don't, I wouldn't wanna, even if we did have this reserved, my thought is, planning is having a hearing, so they should come first, but if we can, if we need to have a meeting, I'm open to doing it on the 1st if we need to, but maybe just choosing a different location, so I would leave that up to...
Selectmen Hall?
Is there a, B, the last hearing that I attended of the planning board
Mm-hmm.
Was held at the Dayton Elementary School. Are they assessed a fee to hold a public...
No, no, not that I know, we own the building at the end of the day.
So I wonder, since they have used that facility in the past, and they're having a public hearing, and obviously, space would not be an issue, seating capacity would not be an issue, if they would entertain that.
My concern is that it has not been reserved, right? They have not reserved that, so if there's a problem with that, then...
No, and they've...
There's no guarantee.
And they've already probably advertised for the hearing
Correct.
On the 1st, like, at this location.
Could we have our, oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah, like, it's probably easier that, probably easier that the board, if it wants, oh, yeah, if, oh, like, if, if it wants, we meet at like prime time, where we have the same capabilities set up there.
Yeah, so I'm okay with having the meeting on December 1st, the meeting also on December 8th.
Yep.
And then the 29th, originally it was December 1st, the 15th, and the 29th, I think the 15th is too late, not too late, but it's late for the setting the tax rate, so if we have it on December 8th.
Yes.
So I will entertain a motion to adopt the schedule that is before us, with the additions of our December meetings to be December 8th at prime time, December 15th in this room here, and December 20...
29th.
No, it's December 1st at prime time, December 8th over here, because December 15th, planning board is gonna be here, so it's the 1st, the 8th, and the 29th.
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectmen Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. The next agenda item is...
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We have an open meeting law complaint form for violation, it's from Patrick Higgins of North Port, Alabama. Name of the public party is the Dayton Board of Selectmen, the specific person, if any, you allege committed, committed the violation, Campuchico is the chairman, date of alleged violation is 10/27/21. Description of the alleged violation, the Dayton Board of Selectmen violated the open meeting law as follows. One, did not accept or adopt their meeting minutes with three meetings or thirty, within three meetings or 30 days. See Agenda for October 27, 2021 for the semantics made regarding their minutes, except for review the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes of February 3rd, 2021, same thing for October 13, 2021, and February 17, 2021. The 13, D, period, E, period, F, period, and G indicate approval of boards of Selectmen's regular and special meeting minutes for June 28, July 10, September 9, and September 29, 2021. Did you want me to read a response to that?
Yeah, like, if that's, like, if that's okay for the record, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
That would be helpful.
So the Board of Selectmen take the open meeting law very seriously, the open meeting law is technical and precedent, is based on decisions not regularly communicated to local offices, the Board of Selectmen prides itself on transparency, making packs readily available to the public. October 27th Agenda regarding those minutes. Agenda item 13A, B, and C, except for review the minutes of February 3rd, February 17th, and October 13th, 2021. In the past few months, the Office of the Board of Selectmen has been making it a priority to accept for review the minutes of the prior meetings on a regular basis. The reason for the older submission is simply to catch up on an extraordinary number of minutes from special meetings that were not previously submitted. It is the intent, it is, the intent is to continue with this practice, making this a uniform, bi-weekly approval process until we are caught up. The minutes of October 13, 2021 were accepted for review at the Board of Selectmen's meeting on October 27, 2021, and is on the November 10, 2021 Agenda for approval. This office appears to be in compliance with regard to the minutes of October 13, 2021. The next alleged violation is under item 4, joint, this is all for October 27th. Under item Agenda 4, joint meeting with Board of Assessors, appointment of assessors, there are no names of people being considered for the appointment, and no indication if this is a joint appointment of an elected assessor under Chapter 41, Section 31. Our response is Agenda Item, let me go back, backtrack. Regarding the first allegation, Agenda item 13, D, E, F, and G, approval of the minutes for June 28, July 10, September 9, and September 29, as stated above, these, these sets of minutes were submitted in order to bring the board into compliance and is part of our plan to catch up. Regarding the second allegation, Agenda item 4, joint board with the Board of Assessors. While it was not possible to anticipate the deliberation actions of both of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Assessors for the Board of Assessors' appointment, the name of the sole applicant could have appeared on the agenda even though the applicant was included in the packet. We will work to rectify this issue with regards to the candidacy of future applicants seeking appointment. The next allegation under 12, correspondence, there is a notation of a donation letter from the prime time with no indication of what is being donated or the value thereof. Agenda item 12, correspondence, with regards to the prime time donation letter, although it was included in the packet, the Board of Selectmen going forward will list the monetary value of all items being donated on the agenda. Agenda item 16, under 16, executive session, these are the same semantics being used for the acceptance of minutes from the June 23, August 11, September 9, and October 13, 2021 meetings as indicated in paragraph 1 of... meetings as indicated in paragraph 1 of the complaint. Agenda item 16, with regards to executive set minutes being approved for, being presented for approval, the Board of Selectmen intending to establish the same routine as the regular meeting minutes as stated above, and it will make it a priority to have the biweekly approval process of accept for review and approval on a regular basis going forward. What actions do you want the public body to take in response to your complaint? This is from Mr. Higgins. Learn and comply with the open meeting law, make acceptance or adoptions of meeting minutes within three meetings or 30 days a priority of this public body. And again, this was signed by Patrick Higgins on October 29, 2021.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
May I make one statement?
Yes.
Just for the record. And I'm stating this for the public and for Mr. Higgins if he's watching. I just want everyone to know how hard our office works to get these minutes out. It is literally a constant, ongoing thing where someone is always typing minutes in our office. So I just want everyone to know we are working as fast as we can. We are being compliant and we will continue to be transparent. We will continue to have our meetings on YouTube. We will continue to have them replayed on Channel 9. And we will continue to pump the meeting minutes out as fast as humanly possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Selectman Hall.
I was curious, in regards to the completion of the minutes. Has the town incurred overtime expenses in regards to this task?
No, I believe the individual who does the minutes, I believe is a salaried employee.
Is it?
Yes.
Okay.
The only reason I made my statement is because when we get these complaint, I'm going to be very honest. When we get these complaints, I read them and it makes it look like people aren't doing stuff. Mrs. Brady literally spends all, I shouldn't say all her time, a large chunk of her time making sure this is done timely. So I really am starting to resent these complaints. I want to also let Mr. Higgins and the public know that we had to take time responding to this. So instead of writing the minutes, we're now responding to what I consider to be a frivolous complaint. So I just wanted that stated for the record. If you could just let us finish the minutes, we will, I promise we'll get them to you as soon as humanly possible. Thank you.
And I just want to make a comment that Ms. Brady, I know for a fact that she works, she's not scheduled for Fridays, but she works on Fridays.
Every day that car is there.
Get different things from Ms. Brady, so she's gone way beyond her responsibilities and duties. Selectman Hall.
I totally agree and totally support the efforts of Mrs. Brady. I would however caution this board in regards to getting into a verbal spat with Mr. Higgins. One of the things that I would like to see the town do is to take a look at this issue from a time management issue. And look into for the next budgetary session if it would be necessary to bring someone on a part-time basis. Because from what I can observe in the office, that both Mrs. Brady and Leanne are very, very busy doing a lot of different tasks. And I go by Town Hall on Fridays on Mrs. Brady's day off and she's working hours. And I wonder at some point, in fairness to all parties involved, that bringing in someone on a part-time basis to help may be the best solution to deal with this issue. This is not the first time that this has come up. And if Mr. Higgins is listening, we are making a sincere attempt to fulfill this obligation per the law. However, it is a very heavy task. So, maybe Mr. Mullin could take a look at it from a time management issue. Is it 10 hours a week, is it 20 hours a week? Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to accept this response to Mr. Higgins' complaint.
Actually, I'm going to make a motion to, yes, accept that. But also, if we could instruct the town administrator to actually like write that complaint on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, that's my motion.
Isn't this what we have here now?
This isn't really.
Yeah, like I'll draft, oh, yeah, like I'll, like I'll draft it into a response.
A letter.
I approve the general.
With all these points that you brought.
Yes, exactly, based on this. Yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote.
Oh, under discussion, I just wanted to say, I made those comments as myself, not on behalf of the board.
Selectman Hall.
Dr. Z, I'm going to second your comments and I totally support them.
I'm still calling for a vote. Selectman Hall.
Aye.
Dr. Z. And Camp Pacheco is.
We just complained about the time tonight. We're right on time.
I looked at it, I thought it was quarter that's in.
I thought it was a lie, I thought we, I didn't do the daylight savings time. That's literally what I thought, I said, there's no way.
I blamed it on the building commissioner, he's our facilities director. I was too busy fixing yours.
So, correspondents. Correspondents, some good news, we got a card from a six-year-old resident addressed to the Board of Health. And this is regarding the Board just trucking that does our recycling and trash pickup. We don't get this too often, but.
They do, we don't.
He wrote, "Thank you very much for being my friend and always waving to me over the years. I'm starting school this year in September, so I won't be home as much to see and wave to you every week. My baby sister will continue to, my baby sister will continue to wave to you on trash day each week. And I'll be sure to wave and say hello on those days that I'm home from school." He, he has a great future, this young man here. We don't have to vote to accept that correspondence, just. The next agenda item is. This was addressed to Ms. Kirwin. I will not be taking the oath of office for the Tobacco Control Enforcement Officer, Health Agent. Due to the medical difficulties, I am a high risk for falls and knees and can give out, and can give out on me without warning. Therefore, will not take the oath." And this is from Diane Heath, who I think we just may have recently appointed as a tobacco person. So I'll entertain it, I assume she's, she says she's not taking the oath, so I assume that she is, is not able to take that position.
I don't believe you've ever appointed her.
We did appoint someone.
I think we did.
At the last meeting, it's on the board.
We definitely. Mr. Chairman, if you're entertaining motions, I motion that we accept the resignation letter of Mrs. Diane Heath as the Tobacco Enforcement Agent.
Second. Any discussion? If not, I'll call.
I, just one quick one. Will, will you amongst the board members send another individual to us?
We've been in contact with Marilyn Edgell.
Oh, yeah, she was the old one, okay.
Even though she retires, she's still involved, they called her back, so she either be doing it, I'm not sure yet, or someone else.
Okay.
Probably know by next week.
Thank you.
Did I call for a vote?
Nope.
Selectman Hall.
Aye.
Dr. Z.
Aye.
And Camp Pacheco is also an aye. I'm going to ask Dr. Z to read the next two letters, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was dated July 6, 2021 to Chief Chris McGee from Lieutenant Joseph T. White, Jr. of the Dayton Fire Department. Dear Chief McGee, this letter is to officially inform you of my intentions to retire from the Dayton Fire Department at the end of the 2021 calendar year. It has been a pleasure and privilege to serve under you and serving this community for almost 39 years. Sincerely, Lieutenant Joseph T. White, Jr. Mr. Chairman, before I make a motion to acknowledge this retirement letter, I did just want to point out that in addition to Lieutenant Joseph White, Jr.'s almost 39 years of service, that it appears to me that public service and fire service is in that bloodline because his father was also the former fire chief. So, if it's okay with this board, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, I would like to thank not just Lieutenant White, Jr., but also the entire White family for all that they have given in the many ways and capacities that they have given back to the Dayton community. And with that, I will make a motion that we accept, excuse me, is it accept or acknowledge? We're not accept, he can retire if he wants. We're going to acknowledge the retirement letter with thanks and appreciation for Lieutenant Joseph T. White, Jr.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I just want to reiterate what you said. He's worked for the town for 39 years and we appreciate all the work that he has done as well as his dad. Call for a vote, Selectman Hall.
Aye.
Dr. Z.
Aye.
And Camp Pacheco is also an aye.
Mr. Chairman, we also received, I should say, Chief McGee received a letter of resignation.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, please.
Yes.
I'm the chairman.
I'm sorry.
It's a habit.
She's closer to me.
Mrs. Golat.
Yes, you need to accept his retirement resignation. Acknowledge does not accept, and the Bristol County Retirement Board does expect the town, as the municipality, as the employer, to act on it, so you've got to accept it for retirement purposes.
Thank you. Okay, so.
Acknowledge doesn't do it.
Yes.
Thank you, Selectman.
Okay, so, I'm not going to ask that deputy, we send it because we, we can't acknowledge his retirement, but I'll entertain another motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we accept the retirement letter as prepared this evening and read this evening for Lieutenant Joseph T. White, Jr.
Is there a second? Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Selectman Hall.
Aye.
Dr. Z.
Aye.
And Camp Pacheco is an aye, passes.
I should have stood for the last one, but I will stand for this one as well, if I may, Mr. Chairman. We received a letter dated October 19, 2021 to Fire Chief Christopher McGee from Lieutenant Thomas Madeiras. And he writes, "Dear Chief McGee, words could not explain on how heartbroken that I am writing this letter to you. The last 29 years of my life, I have worked alongside some of the best people in the world. It is an honor and a privilege to serve under your command. The town of Dayton did one thing correct when they hired you to lead the Dayton Fire Department into the future." He's right. "We all say, I can't wait for retirement until we are faced with that reality, especially when we are dedicated and love what we do for a living. I am humbled and honored that I was able to serve the residents of Dayton and have no regrets for anything. The residents of Dayton can rest assured that the men and women of the Dayton Fire Department are committed to serving them with dignity and honor. On a personal note, I could not ask for a better friend and leader. Chris, working alongside of you and under your command is a privilege and an honor, and you should be proud of your accomplishments. Your friendship is unmeasurable, and I am glad that we have worked, laughed, and cried together. I never thought that this day would come, and regretfully must tell you that my last day as a full-time firefighter for the Dayton Fire Department will be January 4, 2022. I am requesting that all remaining vacation sick and holiday time earned be paid out in one lump sum. Friends always, Thomas Madeiras, Lieutenant, Dayton Fire Department."
Mr. Chairman.
Selectman Hall.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the retirement letter of Lieutenant Thomas Madeiras with deep and sincere thanks and appreciation.
Is there a second?
I have a discussion point.
Yes, I just want to make a comment that Mr. Madeiras has been active in our September 11th presentation that we do at the second fire station. And I'm sure we'll find somebody else to do it, but he's done a great job as far as, as far as that goes. And the reason why Selectman Hall jumped in there, he was afraid that you were going to make a motion to acknowledge this for us. Selectman Hall.
These people, both of them, Lieutenant White and Madeiras, have been pillars in this community. It's not just their contributions in the fire department, their contributions to the, to the life of the citizens of Dayton. I was wondering if we could honor them since they both have put in over 25 years of service to this community with a proclamation at a, at a future meeting.
I'm fine with that, Mr. Chairman.
I'm okay with that. I don't think we need a motion, we just look at a proclamation prepared for one of our.
Absolutely, schedule that, sure.
Future meetings.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, may I just make one brief comment? Actually, I wouldn't say one, just several, but it won't be long.
Please don't start giving me numbers because it doesn't, and I don't have the gavel.
What I want to say in all seriousness, and I know we have Mrs. Jamie Madeiras, fortunate enough to have her on the call. What I do want to say in all seriousness is that the town of Dayton, our entire community, public safety innovates every person that lives in this community. There is some point in your life where you will need to call a public safety official. And our town and all our residents are better because these two gentlemen served. When I made my remarks at the 9/11 ceremony, I didn't mention names, but I had alluded to individuals from the fire department that had went to New York City in the aftermath, when the city was still smoldering. And two of those three individuals are retiring. And we are receiving and acting on their retirement letters tonight. Those are the types of individuals that work for the Dayton Fire Department. They are people with integrity and honor and dignity. And I consider myself very fortunate and blessed to work with them. And I want to tell Mrs. Madeiras, and Lieutenant White, if you're listening, that the hours that I spent at the fire station talking to the men and women were some of the best time I've ever spent in my life. And I consider myself lucky and a better public servant because I learned from them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for those comments. I'll call for a vote, Selectman Hall.
Aye.
Dr. Z.
Aye.
And Camp Pacheco is also an aye, passes. The next correspondence, notice to land owners is from Embridge. Algonquin Gas Transmission, to whom it may concern, this is notice to land owners. Algonquin Gas Transmission LLC. Algonquin is an interstate natural gas transmission company that maintains and operates pipelines through the states of New Jersey, New York, Connecticut, Rhode Island, and Massachusetts. These natural gas pipelines are subjected to exclusive federal jurisdiction under the Natural Gas Act of U.S. 15 U.S.C. Must be section 717-717W. Furthermore, the safety maintenance of its facilities are also subjected to exclusive federal jurisdiction under the Recordified Pipeline Safety Act of 49 U.S.C. 60, comma, 101. It's seg, I don't know what that, that means. The Recordified Pipeline Safety Act, the Safety Act, vests exclusive regulatory power as to the safety of interstate natural gas transmission lines in the U.S. Department of Transportation and the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. The Safety Act regulates the design, installation, inspection, testing, construction, extension, operation, replacement, and maintenance of the pipelines. Algonquin has been acquiring easement rights since the 1950s which established, which establishes restrictions necessary to maintain and operate their pipelines safely. It's imperative that our access to maintain and operate the pipeline is not blocked or impaired by objects that would limit equipment and vehicle movement in a critical situation. Algonquin also relies on aerial patrol to monitor construction activities on or near Algonquin's right-of-way. A well-defined aerial view of the right-of-way is essential to the safety program. Algonquin is presently clearing, cutting trees and brush within the right-of-way limits located on or near your property. Your cooperation in this program is essential to the safety of Algonquin pipelines. Fence gates within Algonquin right-of-way should be unlocked to allow access. Please be advised that fences installed with Algonquin right-of-way must be approved prior to any fence installation. If you have any questions concerning Algonquin's tree and brush cutting program, please don't hesitate to call our Westwood, Mass. office at 508-938-7728, Monday through Friday between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 3:30 p.m. And it's from Kathy Aruda. I don't think we need to take any action with that was given to the neighbors and landowners of the, close to the Algonquin pipeline. Minutes. I'll entertain a motion to accept for review the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes of October 27, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Selectman Hall.
Aye.
Dr. Z.
Aye.
And Camp Pacheco is also an aye, passes. I'll ask for a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes of October 13, 2021.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Selectman Hall.
Aye.
Dr. Z.
Aye.
And Camp Pacheco is an aye, passes. I'll ask for a motion for the approval of. I'll ask for a motion for the approval of the Board of Selectmen's special meeting minutes of February third, twenty-twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Selectmen Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campa Chico is also an aye, passes. I'll ask for a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen's special meeting minutes of February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Selectmen Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campa Chico is also an aye. I'll ask for a motion to release the Board of Selectmen's executive session minutes of August twelfth, twenty-twenty-one.
Excuse me, can I request you table those, or just act on that at the next meeting, because there's an error in the date?
Yeah, okay. So we'll, I don't think we need a motion, but we'll take that up at the December first meeting. Approval of the warrant. Yep. Approval of the warrants. I don't think we have to vote on that, just, oh, do we have to, do we have to table it? No? Okay.
No, no action, it's fine.
Okay, so, I'm just going to ask that we have that ready for the December first Board of Selectmen's meeting. Approval of the warrants. Now, Dr. Z, do you have that information?
Yep, I sure do. Mr. Chairman, I motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the following warrants, all dated November third, twenty-twenty-one. Eighteen A dash twenty-two in the amount of one-hundred-seven-thousand-six-hundred-twenty-two dollars and fifty cents, eighteen B dash twenty-two in the amount of sixty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-fifty-two dollars and sixty-one cents, and eighteen C dash twenty-two in the amount of five-hundred-ninety-three dollars and seventy-three cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I want to call for a vote, Selectmen Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campa Chico is an aye, passes.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the following warrants, all dated November tenth, twenty-twenty-one. Nineteen A dash twenty-two in the amount of one-hundred-four-thousand-five-hundred-twenty-one dollars and eighty-six cents, nineteen B dash twenty-two in the amount of three-hundred-ninety-eight-thousand-three-hundred-forty-five dollars and sixty-two cents, and nineteen C dash twenty-two, hold on to your seats, two-million-seven-hundred-seventy-two-thousand-seven-hundred-eleven dollars and fifty cents.
Is there a second?
Oh.
Any discussion?
No.
If not, I'll call for a vote, Selectmen Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campa Chico is an aye. Is there any public input?
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Gulat, yes.
There was an MMA meeting today, and just quickly, Adam Schefter Lane, who was MMA president and Arlington Town Administrator, town manager, excuse me, talked about his town's effort to advocate for a strong net-zero stretch energy code and a home rule petition banning natural gas hookups. Also, general thoughts about how our policy committee can be more effective. There were, there are still comments being made to our MMA representatives that they don't feel the MMA leadership, Board of Directors, which are all people from various communities, act quickly enough and forcefully enough, especially on issues that we raise. I don't agree with that. Somebody said, "We don't make any progress." Well, rest assured, as I told them, I would not have stayed on this committee and accepted appointment for almost, probably over eighteen years, if I felt that it was a total waste of time and nothing was being accomplished. So, I think some of the comments are coming from very large communities. Others out in the west, or smaller communities, tend to look at things differently and take the time to study. And I would say they're less demanding, but we have made progress, there's no question about it. The other part of the meeting-
Ms. Gulat?
Yes.
I'm sorry. May I ask you a question before you move on regarding the net-zero stretch energy code?
Yes.
In your opinion, what is the, what seems to be the consensus on the policy committee regarding that? Because that would impact, if that were to really be adopted on a state level, it would impact Dayton, because we did adopt it, not the net-zero version.
No, and the committee didn't vote on it. This was more of an informational thing, because they're talking about this. The Arlington has taken action on it, and there were, there were some other committees, excuse me, communities that signed letters supporting it. But it would be a local option if it passes. I mean, to ban natural gas hookups on all new construction? My personal opinion is, what's the backup? Because of the backup, if you ban natural gas connections, your alternative is all-electric and heat pumps. My question to them that has not been answered is, what's the backup when the power goes out? We just had a storm here in this part of the state, and we know that there was power out for some folks for quite a while. So, to say that over a period of time, natural gas will be eliminated, at least for new construction, what's the backup? You know, nobody's answered that. It's fine to, to say we need to cut down on the emissions and fossil fuels and all that other stuff, but what is the backup? So, it's been discussed a few times. These communities have taken some action, but I would have a difficult time standing at the town meeting as a resident saying, "Yeah, let's do this," because you've always got to have a backup when you're talking the basic heating system. And certainly, if you can, if you have your heat pumps for heating and cooling, that's fine. But I can tell you, for example, they just replaced the boiler at St. Nicholas Church because they have heat pumps for heating and air conditioning. As long as it doesn't get too cold, if it gets too cold, the boiler kicks in. That's why they replaced it. So, again, it has, that facility has a backup plan. And I would think homeowners would want the same kind of backup, reliable backup. The other issue that came up, there was a presentation by Representative Dylan Fernandez and Steve Long from the Asia Conservancy. Steve is the Director of Government Relations. Representative Fernandez has presented a bill that would establish blue communities, which is similar to green communities, only this is modeled after the Green Communities Bill, but it is to incentivize local action to reduce nuclear pollution and ocean acidification. Interesting thing is, when they talked about some communities that signed on for this, I was visualizing the map. So if you start in Brockton and draw a line straight out to the coast, and then in the other direction, down to Providence, everything's sold with that line, is, no one has responded to this. And my question to the proponents, and to some of the supporters on our committee, were, have you actually looked at what the EPA requires relative to what communities have to do? Dayton is fortunate that so far, fingers crossed, we only have to monitor or report on E. coli and coliform in our local waters. Many communities are already being ordered to test for phosphorus and nitrates. And when I say fingers crossed, that's expensive. You know, the testing for that has to go in, we believe, in a certified lab. So I'm hoping we never have to get into that. But it just seemed to me that the things that we're talking about that were in the bill, I think they need to look at what the EPA requires. They kept talking about the DEP, and I said to them, "You understand EPA has priority for stormwater in the state of Massachusetts. We file MS four, the annual report. It goes to the EPA with a copy to DEP." So, all I requested was, please look at what's already in effect. And the response was, "No, we haven't talked to the EPA, but we will take a look at it," because I'm thinking, let's not duplicate things and pass a state law that in effect, most of which may already be in place because of stormwater regulations. I don't mean to be critical of committee members, but quite frankly, most of them are coolers when it comes to stormwater. And we are a policy committee on environment.
We won't show them this.
But, but seriously, seriously, they don't know what's already out there. They don't know what their communities are required to do or report on or control on or test for. So, I think a blue communities program is good, but before you add more legislation to the list, take a look and find out what's already going on, and maybe contact the EPA and find out exactly what's already out there, what all of us are required to do. The people in the western part of the state were really into ocean acidification, but needless to say, the lady from New Bedford, she's talking multifish frequently. That's a big impact on that, that industry from an economy standpoint.
Dr. Z, do you have a question?
I do. Regarding the blue communities, I know you had mentioned it's similar to green communities. It sounds like it all hasn't been figured out by the people who proposed it, but are they going to structure it like green communities, where it's going to be a grant program through one of the state agencies?
And they said it would be modeled after the Green Communities Program. And I said, "We are a green community," so obviously, you know, we're on board with that. But there was another gentleman that spoke, and he said that his community was just getting into green communities. And it's, it's not a, it's not a widespread process like the Community Compact Cabinet, where every, every community in the state eventually got involved in that and saw the benefit of it. There's a lot of places that are not green communities, and they're not interested at this point. So, I think, I hope they talk to EPA and find out what's out there. Don't create something to duplicate that's something that's already out there. We don't need more repetitive rules. But I think it's worth looking into if there are things that they can come up with that would be beneficial to, again, controlling runoff and what, and it all ends up in the ocean eventually. But it does affect inland communities because of ponds and streams and rivers and all of that. The other thing was, I've told you before about the, the ban that the state was going to issue on mattresses and textiles. That actually has passed. It is state law. November of twenty-twenty-two means no mattresses or textiles will be accepted at landfills. And they're supposed to be coming up with a solution to the problem of what to do with them. But that's, that's out there. And the Solid Waste Plan that passed, there's going to be a webinar on Monday, November twenty-second, from twelve to one. And if you go on the website for the Solid Waste Plan, you can actually sign up for that and participate, or just sit there and listen to it, if you want to know what else is in it. But those were the items that came up. Regarding, I missed part of the BP thing. I haven't, I looked at the agenda when it came out. I should have printed it, because halfway through my MMA meeting, I got this red flag on my computer telling me that my Adobe Acrobat Reader subscription expired. I can't get into anything that's an Adobe document, so I'm trying to figure out how to do this. Because Mrs. Erickstein, I had problems with it before, and she sent a link to me. I, and it's been working. I had to use that for my MS four recording. All of a sudden, I got shut off today, so I'm sorry that I didn't have the full agenda. I did hear the BP, part of BP's presentation. The only thing I would mention, I mean, certainly the tax impact is something we all have concern about. And when we've talked about capital projects, I know a number of times, before the Aggie got approved, I've said that we're going to have bond issues at the Aggie School, we will have bond issues at BP, plus we have open bond issues in town that we're paying on. But the one thing I will point out, I was on the Board of Selectmen when Dayton and Rehoboth went to BP and asked if they could get in. And the reason that that was asked was because, under the vocational law, if you don't offer a program in your community, or your program is full, and you have a student that wants that program and is accepted, the community in which the student lives must pay tuition and transportation to get that student to that vocational school. That was when there were students from Dayton-Rehoboth that were being sent to Tri-County Voke in Franklin, and the tuition and transportation costs were huge. That was also when Dayton was being assessed to pay for kids from Rehoboth, because we didn't have any Dayton kids in that program. Anyhow, the important thing to think about, I know it's a bond issue, I know it's a building project. The other thing is, we were able to get back into Bristol Plymouth, because what they did was, it was like, we voted to join in the beginning, unlike Freetown, who now wants to come in. So that's a different story. They're brand new. Dayton-Rehoboth voted to join that regional school district. And then, after the study began and all the talk was going on, it was decided that Dayton-Rehoboth could offer programs at its own school that would meet the needs of the Chapter Seventy-four students. And that weren't okay until the programs weren't there, and they didn't expand enough programs. And we had, again, students being tuitioned out to Tri-County Voke at a very expensive rate. But getting back to us being members of BP, keeping in mind, we have got to balance the need of the students, the impact on the tax rate, and also the ramifications of Chapter Seventy-four. It's, it's just something I want you to be aware of. This came up at the Aggie School when one community got up and said, "We were actually going to vote on that project, that bond issue at the Aggie School level." And a representative from a community got up and said, "I'm going to vote no, and we're not going to pay for this, and we'll pull our kids out." And I spoke up and said, "You can pull your kids out. If they want to go to Aggie, you're going to pay, and you're going to pay more than you will as, if you will, part-owner of this whole process," simply because that's what the law states. So that's something we have to keep in mind, that if in fact people indict and say, "Hey, we don't support it," what we heard is a district-wide vote, and we heard that it is the majority of the district, it's not by community, and there is the requirement that we must provide vocational education for students who want it. So, that was just something, and again, this is when the voice went out, and then the audio, the video went out for a while. I had to run out to the kitchen to watch television.
We had Zoom issues, Selectmen Gulat. It wasn't, it wasn't your computer, it was on our end.
Okay. So I only got a problem with the Adobe. The last thing I want to say, the last thing I want to say tonight, regarding the letter, the complaints from Mr. Higgins, I'm going to make a suggestion that isn't going to cost more money on the hiring of additional staff or anything else. Later on tonight, I believe, you're going to vote on some executive session minutes. The only thing that you are required to vote on, open session minutes, is the actual vote. So, Mr. Chairman, read the agenda item that mentions the letter from Mr. Higgins. Just tell me what the agenda says.
It says, "Open Meeting Log Complaint from Patrick Higgins, dated October twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one. Review, Discuss, and Act."
Okay. All you need on that is, under that, you put that on the minutes, that agenda item, and you can have it to say, "The committee discussed the, the letter containing open meeting complaint. And then it was moved by, let's say, Dr. Z, and seconded by Mr. Hull, and voted unanimously to whatever you want to say for action. All of the notes that are taken after meeting by Mrs. Brady should be considered meeting notes, not minutes. Therefore, she takes all the notes, she sits down to write the minutes, she only writes a brief introduction on what it is, the committee discussed, whatever, and then the motion, the vote, and that's it. Because that will speed up getting it out. The meeting notes are still going to be available. The recording of this meeting will be there. And all you have to do is record the votes, and that came right from the Attorney General's office. So this is just a suggestion, because I'm- So this is just a suggestion, because I know Karen's buried. And I know that it's always been that way. And I know she takes a lot of notes because she's trying to get the discussion, but to meet, who can be held to the requirements of the law in the thirty days of this or of that, then the way to shorten it is, a brief introduction, what the vote is, and move on to the next one. Just a thought. But when I heard this again tonight, I thought the same thing. I just, you know, whatever.
You're feeling like it's Groundhog Day, like me, Selectman Goulart?
I think, you know, I think it's fine for somebody to sit back somewhere and monitor a public body and how they conduct their business, and then to file complaints? We all know that have had any connection with working in the Board of Selectmen's office, the amount of work that has to be generated to get out minutes. And to have this constant, and to me, it's almost constant, criticism about meeting deadlines, I don't think it's, I don't think it's there. I don't think it's a fair assessment of the workload that has to be done. And quite frankly, I don't think we ought to spend more money hiring another person. I think if we go to a meeting notes situation, and the meeting minutes will be a summary of the notes, recording the votes, and later on tonight, you're going to get a look at something like that. And that's all I'm suggesting. Think about doing that. It's going to help Mrs. Brady, it's going to get these things out faster, and you are going to be in compliance with the open meeting law as per a ruling from the Attorney General from a few years back, and I'll just leave it at that. But something to think about. Because you'll do the bare minimum, but you will have more notes that can be looked at if somebody questions something.
I agree. That's a reasonable solution to our, our problem.
You know, and, and I'll probably get cited for stormwater minutes, but I'm going to tell you, we try to get as much data into our minutes as we can. We have even done meeting, not meeting notes, site visit notes. So we have a record of who said what. But in all honesty, when I get the minutes to review, I have to pare them down because there's just so much to them. And I don't want to get, I don't want our committee to get cited because we didn't get these minutes out timely or anything else. But they've got to be, so we have the info through notes, but the official record records the votes, and that's all we're required to do.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Just a reminder that tomorrow, we are celebrating, we have a ceremony for Veterans Day at eleven o'clock next door. And I agree with Mrs. Goulart, this isn't a transcript of the, what happens, it's just a synopsis of what happens. The recording, the videotape is what is the actual record for. Also want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and please come to the lighting ceremony we're going to have here the Saturday after Thanksgiving. Any other public input? If not, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we enter into executive session, session, excuse me, under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Thirty-